Good afternoon, friends and colleagues, and welcome to the November 21, 2013 System Oversight Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. This afternoon, we will be discussing the Division of Human Resources. As always, before we begin, I'd like to remind us to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of the meetings. Also, friends and colleagues, before we do begin, I tend to do these things during my Board Chairs Report, which we will not have today, but I want to give us an opportunity to offer a moment of silence for a friend and colleague and former Prince George's County Board of Education member who passed recently, Mr. Robert Duncan. Friends, please join me in offering Mr. Duncan a moment of silence. Thank you, friends, for remembering our lost colleague. Ms. Epps, would you please lead us in the Board Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who worship stand, hallowed, in the name of his holy name.
Mrs. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks?
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Dr. Kaufman?
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Muse Ario?
Here.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, first of all, is there-
Ms. Monday, I'm sorry.
A motion? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the public comments on non-agenda items be moved into 4.2.
It's a move.
It's been moved and seconded that public, that non-comment items be moved to 4.2.
Mr. Chair, we need to correct the record for the roll just momentarily to call another Board Member.
Oh, absolutely.
And Ms. Monday.
Happy to be here.
Ms. Monday is here. The record is corrected. Do we have any discussion about changing the agenda item to move non-agenda items speakers to 4.1? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That change is noted. Also, colleagues, please note that the following change, item number 11.1, fiscal year 2003, post-close transfer, was removed from the agenda. Other than those two changes, may I please have a motion to adopt the November 21, 2013 System Oversight Meeting Agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we've adopted the agenda. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the October 24, 2013 Board Meeting Minutes?
Yeah, I would like to change something, so, or raise the issue.
Okay, do we want to take a motion first and then adopt it?
With the minutes.
So we'll take a motion first and then entertain a change. So may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Ms. Higgins, do you have a correction for us?
Yes, thank you. Turning my notes. On the CEO's report regarding the transition team, it was part of the Board Minutes, and my question was that-
What page are you on? Just to help us to get where you're on.
It was in the early part on the CEO report.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I'm looking on my cell.
Oh, October 10, I'm looking at the wrong-
I don't know that I got... I don't have it in front of me. Apparently, I didn't get a copy. But in the C... It's in the electronic copy, the CEO report. In the Minutes, it says that the CEO will report that the transition team is meeting and that they will be presenting the findings to the community in December. I guess my first thing was, is that, is that that they're presenting their findings to the community or to the Board? Since it has to do with Board of Education.
Ms. Davis.
So to the Board. So if the Minutes, thank you, could reflect then that there, that there will also be the findings presented to the Board? And is it possible to find out where and when those meetings are? Apparently, they're ending in December, which doesn't leave much time, but it would be-
Yes, I can get that information to you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion about the Minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, folks. The Minutes have been approved. We are now moving to public comment on agenda items, and we have, since we've made that change, we do have one speaker for a non-agenda item. Just for, before I call you up, just a reminder that you've been registered to speak for public comment on a non-agenda item. You must speak on the topics you've been registered. The Board will not address the comments. You have three minutes to speak. If you exceed your allotted time at the sound of the buzzer, you may complete your sentence only. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Sounds familiar, Mr. Maggot? Correct? Come on up, my friend, Mr. Gerald Maggot. Unwelcome to the upper class.
Outstanding is now on. Let me just say happy week before Thanksgiving before I get started. I wanted to stand up today just to offer an experience and an opportunity for some of the students. Last year, I was afforded a great opportunity with Congresswoman Donna Edwards, Congressman John Sarbain's, Congressman Elijah Cummings, and Congressman Chris Van Hollen. They allowed us to take a group of undergrad students who participated in a business competition we had to tour the Capitol, go down in the underground, the underground tunnels where the, where when the congressmen and the senators need to avoid the press, they certainly take. We took a trip to the Library of Congress and had a really exciting time for about 50 students we took out last summer. So I received a memo that another opportunity to come up again, that they would like us to host another event, so I said, let's look towards some of the high school students to give them an opportunity just to see something different, to experience something different, to open up their minds, and let them really see the freedom, the opportunity, really see our government in a new light, and challenge their thinking to exceed and go further. I mean, if we don't expose new opportunities to the students, you all know that when they get off the bus at 3 o'clock, they're going to continue their same habitual habits from 3 to 8, whatever that may be. But if we can shock somebody's world and open up their eyes in a new direction, it could be very exciting. So if any of the, if anybody who is interested in connecting and talking a little bit later, maybe you have some schools in mind or some students in mind, we're very happy to accommodate as we're getting ready to set the agenda for 2014, looking in the springtime. So I wanted to leave that note. Thank you so much, and enjoy the turkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maggot. All right, before we move on, a couple of notes. I should have noted first, our CEO, Dr. Maxwell, was not able to join us. He had some previous commitments, some of which, of course, included his ongoing visit to schools. He's committed to visiting all 204 this year, and he's well along in that process and is keeping with those commitments, along with some other previous obligations that he had. Also, every one of the members of the public who come and visit us and spend time is special, but I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my colleague in the back, Senator Ulysses Curry, who's spent some time to visit with us today. Welcome, Senator Curry. Thank you so much. All right, there are no legislative items this afternoon in 5.0, so we'll move on to 6.0, System Oversight Discussion Items, Human Resources. Do I need to make any reminders about phones today? Colleagues, I will yield the floor to Dr. Davis, I believe, for the System Oversight Presentation on Human Resources.
Thank you so much. And on behalf of Prince George's County Public Schools, teachers, staff, and students, I would like to extend congratulations to Dr. Maxwell, our Chief Executive Officer of Prince George's County Public Schools, on being named Maryland Superintendent of the Year for 2014 by the Public School Superintendents Association of Maryland. This announcement was made during the annual Maryland Negotiating Service Awards Banquet in Ocean City, and he extends his appreciation to the Board members that were able to congratulate and offer their appreciation for his awards, so thank you.
Dr. Davis, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you real quick with that. Everyone can keep a secret here? We were going to do something super special for Dr. Maxwell on that occasion today, so we'll do that next time he's here. Shhh. Don't tell me about it.
He would definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much. The topic for our Oversight, System Oversight Meeting is Human Resources. Mr. Robert Gaskin, our Chief of Human Resources, will provide an overview of the Human Resources Division with a focus on Goals 1 through 4. Goal 1, ensure teaching and learning produces college-prepared and career-ready students. Goal 2, transform community trust through transparent communication and building relationships. Goal 3, create an organizational structure staffed with a skilled team centered on enhancing teaching and learning. And Goal 4, align resources to system priorities. Mr. Gaskin.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Davis. It gives me great pleasure in giving the Division of Human Resources System Oversight Presentation as the Chief of Human Resources. I have been in Prince George's County for over 40 years, 26 years in the Division of Human Resources. I've seen many changes through the years. However, one thing has never changed, is that our students has always been the focus of my work. As I begin my tenure as Chief, I have taken a back-to-basics approach with a focus on fusion, on creating high-leverage strategies to create a high-performing workforce, to ensure that our division works to accomplish our goals of providing every child in Prince George's County Public Schools with a high-quality education. This afternoon's presentation, you will see, is framed in components. I will cover the systematic work and key drivers for the Division, including our successes and challenges. Following my portion, my leadership team will provide detail for their functional areas. Prior to the beginning, I would like to take time and the opportunity to introduce my team. Mrs. Debbie Sullivan, Acting Director of Human Resources Operation; Mr. Bill Wy... Mr. William Ryan, Employee Performance and Evaluation Officer; and Allison Hui, Acting Director of Employee Relations. As you look at the employee life cycle, you see phases in that employees travel, recruitment, selection, performance, succession, planning development, and transition to new roles or existing in the organization. This is our core work. Our goal is to provide world-class services to each employee at every juncture of their employment to ensure our children receive a world-class education. We are able to provide a greater focus on the services we provide to employees by realigning our goals or aligning our goals with those established and shared as part of Dr. Maxwell's transition plan. It is critical to point out that Human Resources serves as a key driver and support mechanisms to accomplish each of the four goals. People are the most critical resources we have in Prince George's County Public Schools. We must focus on getting the right people in the right positions, measure their performance through fear and reliable evaluations, support them so that they continuously grow and develop, and finally, make data-driven performance decisions so that we truly have our staff positively impacting student achievement. Key Performance Indicators. The Executive Cabinet outlined key performance indicators by which the Division is measured annually. As you see, the performance indicators are aligned with the phases of the employment life cycle, specifically recruitment, staffing, performance evaluation, as well as customer service, specifically the satisfaction levels of all employees. While the focus of these key performance are primarily on teachers, our Division maintains metrics on all employee groups as all positions are critical to the success of our students. The next three slides focus on the primary goals and key strategies of the Division. As I begin my tenure, as I fully acknowledge, there are pockets of success where we can celebrate, as well as plenty of opportunities for improvement. In order to accomplish this, we must have shared goals that are aligned with the vision and mission of the CEO, the Board of Education, and the county exec. These goals must ensure we have a workforce-ready and skilled force for our students. That being said, our Division has selected these six overarching goals to drive our work. We must do everything possible to strategically create and support a high-performing and diverse workforce. We must shift to become a more proactive partner with other divisions. We must become more nimble and school-facing in our work for greater impact and support to schools, as well as improve our overall customer service. We must also ensure that skilled, that is skilled, resourced, and we are prepared to meet the needs of the school system. Challenges. Along with our success, we have challenges that impact our success, which includes consistency in communication, technology gaps and integration, staff training, and leadership transition. As I reflect over the past year, I would like to share several accomplishments. In April, we implemented a more school-facing structure to provide improved support to schools. This work was informed by our participation in the Gates Foundation Urban Schools Human Capital Academy, where Prince George's County has the opportunity to work with the largest urban school systems around the nation. We are in the beginning to see great impact and support to schools through this effort. We implemented an employee service center where we consolidated applicants and employee support services in one centralized location. This office has streamlined our ability to handle and charge services for customers. Over the past three months, they have handled over 33,000 customers in addition to managing all substitute services. As a quick highlight, I would like to note that this year, we refined our substitute qualifications to hire degree subs, which has gone extremely well. We also completed two major grants with the USDE and the Gates Foundation. Finally, we continue to engage all stakeholders in the development of our processes and work particularly around evaluation with the continuance of the evaluation work groups and back in the spring, our Recruitment and Retention Task Force. Along with our successes, we have challenges that impact our successes, which includes consistency in communication, technology gaps and integration, staff training, and leadership Common Concerns and Strategies for Improvement. This slide represents a more detailed look at the core areas of concern and strategy for improvement in responsiveness and efficiency, customer service, and decision-making. We have heard from applicants, employees, the community, and our executive leaders about the areas in need of improvement. We know that we must continue to leverage cutting-edge technology to improve. For example, since implementation of our applicant-tracking system, our recruitment, newer technology is available to engage talent pools on the front end of the process for earlier and more frequent engagement, improving results. This is something we are researching and looking for dramatic improvement. We will plan to increase our focus on using data to inform performance, particularly in areas like time to fill and communication with supervisors. As I stated, we must have laser focus in several areas to move the level and increase our service to customers. We must use data appropriately. We must train and develop staff. We must dramatically improve our communication, and we must provide a cohesive continuum of high-quality services. Division Structure. In order to address our priority areas, we needed to tweak the structure within the Division to ensure alignment of roles that better support the work. It has been recommended and approved by exec leadership that we move from a three-department structure to four. The first realignment of a Department of Staffing will allow a critical management and work support to be in place to fully implement the new school-support team structure. A shift in one department to include workforce planning and strategy will allow for improved coordination and utilization of data to improve our forecasting, talent mining, and full employee life-cycle coordination. This office will work collaboratively with the new diversity office to ensure that we are building and supporting a high-performing and diverse workforce. This office will directly, excuse me, this office work directly on our most impactful recruitment strategy, which is actually retention of our best staff. This office will also focus efforts on showcasing our district as an employee of choice. We also has expanded and properly resourced the Employee Performance and Evaluation Office, which was elevated to an Executive Cabinet level. This office will focus on all employee performance and evaluation work collaboratively with talent development and academics to ensure we are evaluating, developing, and supporting staff at high levels for our children. And finally, we have the Office of Employee and Labor Relations, who will continue to handle our compliance efforts, grievances, investigations, and negotiations. At this particular time, I would like to now present Ms. Debbie Sullivan, who will present information on recruiting and staffing. Please excuse me. I'd like for the staff to please stand so we can recognize our team. All HR staff, please stand. Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Dr. Davis, Executive Team, Dr. Eubanks, members of the Board of Education, and my colleagues in HR. I am elated to share with you our work in the departments of, within Human Resources that recruit, select, and staff our school system. As Mr. Gaskin previously shared, our work in the Division is to ensure that each and every position, there's a high-performing staff member in place to directly or indirectly support our students' growth, learning, and achievement. Students are truly at the heart of everything we do each and every day, and their successes are motivation. We know that it takes each of the 6,640 different positions for which we hire and the 18,000 employees we support clicking on all cylinders to make it all happen. And at the end of the day, what ultimately matters is that our students leave our wonderful school system, college and career-ready. For the next few slides, I'm going to jump in and share some key data points directly related to recruitment and staffing, which will provide for you a portal into our work as we strive to hire high-quality staff and achieve our system's goals and objectives, college and career-ready graduates. Currently, the two offices I support cover recruiting and staffing functions of the employment life cycle, and as always, the most frequent questions are always around the most critical positions of classroom teachers, as they are truly the drivers of student learning. The recruiting office is a source, their work is to source and build a pool of quality candidates and secure commitments for candidates to teach in Prince George's before our competitors. That means competitors from across the nation, from next door. Doesn't matter. Our goal is to capture them quickly and get, seal the deal. Having accurate projections are critical to our ability to fill vacancies with top talent. As this slide depicts, you'll see our actual versus projected hires, and you'll notice that our projections were a little low last year. Our voluntary resignations were higher than anticipated, and this was largely centered around providing a competitive compensation package. We truly appreciate the work of the Board and our labor partners to address our fiscal challenges, but ultimately, it had an impact on retention and has had an impact on retention over the past two to three years, particularly with our veteran teachers. The talent drain of our teaching workforce is a hardship on the system, as well as all other positions. While many believe that recruitment is the challenge, as Mr. Gaskin said, our most productive recruitment strategy is truly retention. Often, a misnomer is that we cannot find top-talent teachers. But the reality is that many, many teachers seek out Prince George's County Public Schools as an employer of choice. The recruitment funnel that's prepared for you provides a quick glimpse of the work over this past recruitment season from October through August. As you can see, at the end of May, we had around 995 candidates signed and sealed on contracts or letters of intent. This group included our PDS interns and candidates that we recruited from across the country. When our recruitment teams are out there pounding the pavement for talent, the yield is often quite high. So why do we have vacancies? Data shows that most candidates typically apply during the month of December, and then again, the peak period is March through April. And in most public school systems, when you look at us across the nation, most positions are not posted or available until late June or July. So the misalignment is one challenging point, and it's also our opportunity for improvement. We have to truly address staffing schools and work within the mandated state deadline, which is July 15, which causes us challenges in sealing the deal early. Next slide. So, I have a question for the Board. This slide depicts just a glimpse of our recruitment schedule, so this is an open invitation to all of you to join us as we go out and try to recruit staff. And just as Mr. Gaskin said, we need, you know, recruitment and retention is a systematic effort, and we know that you will put our best foot forward as you accompany us, so a detailed schedule will be provided in the future. While many believe, so as I said earlier, this work is not just about teachers, and I know they're always the focus, but it's really about everyone. This particular slide depicts an applicant's journey for employment in our school system. Last year, we received over 205,000 applications for 887 postings in our applicant-tracking system, our recruitment. Our staffing teams work very hard and diligently with our managers and principals to fill all positions within the school system. So as you can see, technology does play a key role in our work. So what are our opportunities and our successes? We must leverage technology to ensure that high levels of service are high-tech, to address the volume, but high-touch, to provide that personal touch and service in closing and sealing the deal for our hires, much faster than our competitors. In order to provide high-touch, we must improve our candidate engagement and communication so that we- so that we don't lose the talented candidates during that wait period while we're waiting for positions to open. We need to rebrand and market the district to attract top talent in all positions, especially teachers, and critical positions such as nurses, information technology, and transportation. With these opportunities, we've had successes. For instance, our outreach this year, we were actually able to get our teacher leaders to come in and participate in our job fairs and screen candidates throughout just specific events, but then again, throughout the recruitment season. They were fast and furious on the phone, conducting phone interviews, and it really provided us bandwidth and to vet candidates with their own colleagues. Our teachers took that task very seriously. We also need to -- well, we actually onboarded 137 resident teachers through three programs for our Career Changers. These programs included external partnership with Teach for America, our internal resident teacher program, which by the way, is the first and only elementary STEM resident teacher program in the state. And it's also the program that trained our current Teacher of the Year, Mr. Albert Lewis. We also have two university partnerships, one with the University of Maryland for Middle School Math and Science, and then with the University of Maryland Notre Dame for Special Education. We've -- in HR and our recruitment and selection process, we fully implemented the Gallup Insight Assessments to support staff selection, and we opened the Employee Services Center as previously mentioned. Finally, this final data slide actually shows critical points over the past three years. As you can see, for the 8,000-plus teacher positions, 98% were filled on the first day of school. While certainly, our goal is to fill 100% of our positions, late resignations, no-shows, absences, new positions, and the ebbs and flows of student enrollment continue to impact our ability to reach 100%, but we keep pushing. The 106 open positions that show vacant on this chart were filled by certified and degreed subs. So what's most important is that our goal is to fill each and every position with a talented, fully-certified teacher. And if we can't do that, we want to make sure we have the highest-quality substitute in place to continue the learning of our students. At the end of the day, our division understands that our role is to constantly hire, is to constantly source and build our talent pipeline and pools for positions and really hire that talent. To that end, we have continued our work to be more school-facing and student-centered. Our work through the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy, we created school support teams to provide that wraparound service and really support staffing in our schools. It provided more closer-to-the-ground support so a staffing specialist truly understood what a principal needed in terms of staffing. We're bolstering our recruitment and staffing services by adding two specialists in recruitment, as well as a director of staffing. We are focused on increasing diversity of our workforce. That is a true commitment. So I'll be working with Dr. Gonzalez, and our focus is on increasing bilingual teachers, our Latino teachers, and our African-American male cohorts within the system. We know that our workforce needs to mirror and address the changing landscape of our district. Finally, as we onboard talent, we need to be ever mindful that our focus must be on the quality of the employment experience. Our valued employees, who make the ultimate difference for our students, we know that we have to address retention. And the continuous development of our staff is the key to success. The one other thing I need to mention is that through the recruitment process, it does allow us -- new strategies allow us to address key levers and pushpoints that the system is focused on. For example, we know that second-grade reading is critically important, as well as ninth-grade retention. And when we go on the road, we are actually pushing in and making sure candidates understand and we're selecting those types of candidates with the skills, talents, and abilities to really move the needle on our success in that area. So as I mentioned, you know, we've reconfigured resources in the Employee Performance and Evaluation Office for greater capacity. And so now I'm going to invite my colleague, Mr. William Ryan, to come to the podium and share the functional area that he supervises.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Good afternoon, Dr. Davis, Dr. Eubanks, board members and colleagues. As you know, over the past several years, due to state mandated changes, we have done a great deal of work to develop new teacher and principal evaluations. This work is critical to support our efforts to ensure our teachers and principals are highly effective and positively impacting student achievement, thus ensuring every student that leaves our schools are college and career-ready. This has been a collaborative effort involving many stakeholder groups, board members, central office staff, principals, teachers, and unions. Due to intensive work needed to implement these new evaluations, the Office of Employee Performance and Evaluation has been expanded. There are several major functions of this office. The first is to facilitate the development of evaluation processes that support employees' professional growth. We want our staff to continuously improve. This work will not be limited to teacher and principal evaluations. Over time, my office will work across all divisions to revise and improve evaluations. The second function is directly tied to compliance. Once the evaluations are developed, it's critical that we ensure the fidelity of the processes and monitor the implementation of each evaluation. During the implementation period, it will also be critical that we are collecting data, analyzing this data, and creating comprehensive reports to track and identify workplace patterns and trends that we can address through professional learning. This data will also allow us to fine-tune our processes. Finally, it is important that there continues to be collaboration and communication with all of the stakeholder groups that are involved in the evaluation processes. Our evaluations are critical tools that support our employees' professional growth and allow them to push themselves and the student who they work with to new heights. Our most critical work at this moment is the implementation of our new teacher and principal evaluations. This past summer, Maryland State Department of Education approved both of our models. These models are focused in two areas: professional practice, which represents 50% of teacher and principal's evaluation, and student growth, which represents the other 50%. Principals and teachers will be using the new evaluations during the current school year and will receive one of three ratings at the end of this school year: highly effective, effective, or ineffective. In the other -- in the area of student growth, there's been a great deal of concern around using lagging data from Maryland State Assessment Tests in teacher and principal evaluations. The good news is that the Maryland State Department of Education has requested a waiver from the United States Department of Education to delay using Maryland State Assessments and Evaluations until next year and possibly the year after. If this is granted, the Maryland School Assessment will not be used in the teacher or principal evaluations, but we will continue to collect this data to study the possible impact of evaluations in the future. The Employee Performance and Evaluation Office is currently working with many departments to provide the support our teachers and principals need as they implement the new evaluations. A large number of professional learning opportunities have been provided for staff, and we continue to plan and deliver the many supports needed for successful implementation. We have also created many resources, such as an evaluation handbook and a staff and educator effectiveness delivering student success seeds website to provide our staff with easy access to these resources. In addition, we are also currently working with our instructional technology staff to create an instructional portal that will give the staff a one-stop shop for critical resources and supports in the area of evaluations and instruction. Finally, the Teacher-Principal Evaluation Steering Committee, which has representation from all stakeholder groups, will meet throughout the year to monitor our progress and refine our processes. At the end of the day, we know that our most important resource is -- Mr. -- Bob? Mr. Gaskin, sorry. Oh, big trouble there. As he mentioned earlier, that our employees are our most important resources. We know, and research supports the fact that highly qualified staff positively impacts student achievement. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Allison Huey, Acting Director of Labor Relations.
Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Davis, executive staff, and my fellow HR colleagues. The Board's probably most familiar with Employee and Labor Relations and its role in the negotiations process. While negotiations are a large part of Employee and Labor Relations duties and responsibilities, it is my pleasure today to share with you the many other ways that our office supports Prince George's County Public Schools in its core mission to provide the highest-quality education to each and every student. Employee and Labor Relations' goal is to assist managers, supervisors, and employees in the resolution of employment and labor matters in a consistent, effective, and efficient manner so that the system's employees can all focus on their core duties and responsibilities. To assist in this goal, the Employee and Labor Relations Office is comprised of several different units. We have the Office of Compensation and Classification. We have Staff Investigation. We have EEO Compliance and Labor Relations. With the Board, the county, the CEO, and executive staff's support, this school system was able for the first time in several years to provide an increased compensation package for all of its employees. Since June 2013, we have completed and concluded negotiations and ratified agreements with Local 2250, SEIU, and PGCEA. And today, on the Board's agenda are the last two agreements that need final approval from the Board for ASASP Units Two and Units Three. Salary increases were also approved by the Board for Board employees, confidential employees, and executive-level employees. These compensation packages also provide for tuition reimbursement and funding for some of the stipends and differentials that had not been previously funded for several years. How do negotiations assist in Prince George's County Public Schools' core mission? Increased salaries and wages will help attract and moreover, retain highly effective employees. And we can all agree that highly effective employees are the key to success of our students and our students' performance. In addition to negotiations, Employee and Labor Relations also processes grievances and appeals made to the CEO. The types of appeals that the Employee and Labor Relations Office process are, for example, a teacher's appeal of an unsatisfactory, or this year, an ineffective annual evaluation, and any grievances alleging a violation of one of the five collective bargaining agreements. Employee and Labor Relations staff work diligently with our bargaining partners to attempt, when possible, the resolution of these issues before grievances, appeals, and arbitrations are put to paper and filed. The special assistant position will assist in the early and preemptive resolution of these issues and to continue to reduce the process time for grievances and appeals. You might ask, how does this work assist in promoting a high-quality education? Quick resolution of disputes allows staff to remain focused on their core duties and responsibilities and minimizes their time engaged in employment issues. Employee and Labor Relations staff provides daily support and guidance to supervisors and managers with employee performance and discipline issues, including leave issues. This daily support takes the form of advice and guidance on how to document performance issues, how to handle issues with misconduct, also how to progressively discipline an employee based upon the particular facts and circumstances of each individual case. As I stated, we try to narrowly tailor every bit of guidance that we do based upon that employee's history, the allegation, in order to frame a fair and reasonable response. One particular area that Employee and Labor Relations has and will continue to provide assistance is in the evaluation of teachers. As Prince George's County enters into the new state-mandated evaluation system, Employee and Labor Relations, in collaboration with the Employee Performance and Evaluation Office, will continue to review the evaluations of teachers who are struggling and may ultimately be deemed to be ineffective. This aspect of Employee and Labor Relations' role fits squarely within our goal to assist in Prince George's County in providing the highest quality of instructions to its students. Our final slide shows some of the data of the cases and duties and responsibilities that Employee and Labor Relations is responsible. As the numbers indicate, Employees and Labor Relations is on pace to maintain its expeditious completion of matters referred to us. As you can see from this table, at this time, Employee and Labor Relations is on pace with recent school years and the final resolution of grievances filed at the CEO's level, that is, before the grievance reaches arbitration. To date, Employee and Labor Relations has resolved approximately 95% of the grievances filed, thereby avoiding the timely and costly arbitration process. Allegations of employee misconduct are referred to Employee and Labor Relations to determine if it would be in the best interest of students and the school system to temporarily place an employee under investigation for allegations of misconduct outside of their normal duties and responsibilities. This is an ever-evolving number, and at the time that the slide was prepared, we had temporarily placed 10 employees. I believe today, we're up to 15, and we just got several requests just this week that we're currently reviewing. So these numbers are constantly evolving. Employee and Labor Relations also represents the school system in unemployment appeals from former employees who have appealed the denial of unemployment. At this time, our office has handled 30 such appeals. Within Labor Relations, the EEO Compliance Officer is responsible for reviewing and making determinations regarding employees' requests for accommodations in order to perform the duties and responsibilities of their position under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The EEO Compliance Officer has 10 days to resolve such issues, and to date, all requests have been resolved within the 10-day time limit. The EEO Compliance Officer is also responsible for handling all internal and external charges of discrimination and harassment. Internal charges are handled pursuant to Administrative Procedure Act 4170. To date, all internal charges have been investigated and responded to within the time limits mandated by that AP, which is 60 days. The EEO Compliance Officer also works closely with the external agencies to respond in a timely manner to the charges filed with external agencies such as the EEOC. Employee and Labor Relations also handles arbitrations on behalf of Prince George's County Public Schools, and to date, one arbitration is currently pending for fiscal year 14. Lastly, Employee and Labor Relations receives reports from internal audits for substantiated findings of employee misconduct referred to their office for review. To date, Employee and Labor Relations has received four such findings, two of which have been resolved, and two which are currently in process. The metrics that I've just shared with you illustrate how important it is for Employee and Labor Relations to handle matters that are referred to it in a prompt and consistent manner. As stated at the outset, the role and goal of Employee and Labor Relations is to support all employees, managers, and supervisors in establishing best practices, applying consistent standards, and providing a work environment that is conducive for every employee to be successful, thereby enhancing the ability to provide the highest-quality education to students within Prince George's County Public Schools. Thank you, Board Chair, Board Member, Dr. Davis, and all of my colleagues.
Thank you, team. Appreciate the presentation. I would like to emphasize that we have begun a back-to-school, back-to-basics approach and are building on that to ensure that our most important goal, providing our children with a high-performing workforce so that they receive the best education possible. After all, this is what we're all about, our students. Thank you for your time. I'd like to close our presentation with a short video showcasing our workforce.
Shine it on my heart, so you could see the truth. And this love I have inside is everything it seems. But for now, I find it's only in my dreams. I can change the world. I will be the sunlight in your universe. You would think my love was really something good. Baby, if I could change the world. If I could be king, even for a day. I'd take you as my queen. I'd have no other way. And our love will rule this kingdom we have made. Till then, I'd be a fool, wishing for the day. But I can change the world.
Mr. Bob?
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Colleagues, thank you for that tremendous presentation, an important presentation. Board members, the floor is now open for questions and comments. I have Dr. Anderson and Ms. Boston. Anyone else interested, please let me know.
Mr. Gaskins, what steps are taken, if any, to ensure that common metrics are used during formative as well as summative evaluations of faculty?
Well, I will let Mr. Wim Ryans. It's a new process that we're using that he has begun to develop, and he knows all of the particulars in regards to what the state requirement is and what we have implemented for Prince George's County this year. Bill?
As I mentioned, first of all, Mr. Gaskins is an incredible boss. Let me tell you that, first of all. So, anyway, need to make up for that last blunder. But as I mentioned in my presentation, the principal and teacher evaluations are both based on two components, one being professional practice, the other is based on growth. For the teachers, professional practice is, the majority of that rating is based on the elements of teaching, Danielson's Model. Principals were certified in Danielson and trained to go in and look for the best practices around the four domains. They actually use eight elements out of the Danielson Model that they're looking at when they're doing observations, and they may do multiple observations, and those are taken together and looked at for a teacher's performance around the instructional component. There's also a piece in the evaluation, a small percentage, 2.5, where the student perception survey, so students will be taking a survey actually here in December, where they'll take a survey, and that will also be impacting a teacher's evaluation. And then there's another 2.5 in that professional practice piece percent that is around the professional growth of our teachers. We know that that's an important piece now with the Common Core and the transitioning we're making and ensuring that they're getting the growth that is needed. In the lower section for teachers, you have the growth piece, which I mentioned, MSA is a component for those teachers teaching MSA, and we would use the information from the state, and that is lagging data, so we have to go back a year and look at the growth from year to year, which is where the concern has been with that and why there's been an effort by the state to put that off until we get to Common Core. There's also a piece in there that is tied to a school progress index, which is our local index. It's also tied to the growth with MSA. And then, of course, the big part is student learning objectives, where the teachers create objectives, they look at the students that they want to focus on. Of course, they're focusing on all students, but they pick groups of students that may be struggling, they create an objective, and then they look at measuring that over the year. They sit down with the principal, the principal approves those objectives, and the baseline data that they have, at the end of the year, they would come back and look at how the students have done to determine a final rating. So, all of that is taken into consideration, and our model is a Z-score that we would use at the end of the year to make determinations on who's effective, highly effective, which is really based on a cohort group of teachers across the system to determine those ranges for highly effective, effective, and ineffective. Principal side is very similar. Of course, it's not Danielson. Principal uses standards, the instructional leadership standards or the framework from the state, and that's what's being used for professional practice for the teachers, for the principals, rather. The principals also have a VALED, which is a kind of a perception survey that'll be used by staff that's incorporated into their evaluation, and their evaluation is also, school-wide data is taken into consideration, everything from the attendance and other indicators that we're looking at to ensure the success of students at the school level.
That's it, Ms. Anderson? All right, again, Boston, Muse Aria, Epps, and somebody named Eubanks.
Mr. Gaskin, thank you and your staff for a great presentation here. I really appreciate that. And yes, I'm looking forward to this invite to join you as we do recruitment. Looking forward to that. Couple of questions. One, on customer service, what, you know, we have a lot of complaints about customer service within our school. So, is your department the one that would actually put together a plan or a series of training for our staff on customer service? And if you are, when do you plan to implement that training?
So, we will put together a plan for human resources as we interreact with employees and new employees. When we say customer service, basically, we're talking about how we approach, how we handle, how we communicate with individuals that are applicants or employees in the school district. Customer service is a big issue, and we've been working with it, but we want to not just isolate it. I know exec leaders are involved in trying to come up with something for systematic school system. But, for instance, with us, with this office that we have for customer service, any emails, any telephone calls, any walk-ins, any work that needs to be done on the computer or internet, when I mention that 33,000, those are the individuals that came through that particular one-stop office.
So, Ms. Boston, as far as customer service for the school system, that comes out of the Office of Communications.
Okay. So, that training will be provided by?
The Office of Communications. The customer service that Mr. Gaskin is referring to would be what we are providing, the customer service to any new employees that are attempting to work with our system.
Okay. My second question, responsiveness. I get a lot of complaints from my constituents when they apply for positions that they do not hear a response back from HR. What process are you implementing to correct that? And when can we expect to see that plan in place?
You said complaints?
Yes. We get a lot of complaints from constituents to say when they apply for positions through the Human Resources Department, that they don't hear back whether they accepted the job, the job has already been filled. They have to constantly call and so forth. So, I would think that now, by this time, we should have something in place where we have a better process by which to respond or get back to applicants that apply. I know we have a lot of applicants that apply, and I saw the numbers up there, but we do need to be able to have a better response.
So, we mentioned the gap with technology in our recruitment process, and we have identified some new technology that we're going to use, and it's for applicant tracking on the front end. So, when someone applies, they will get automatic responses, and also, it will also inform them at what level, if you're eligible and ineligible. Immediately, beginning in January, we will have a communication guidance up on our website until we finalize this applicant tracking process that we have to inform individuals as they apply, how to apply, what to expect, and what the outcomes would be. What does eligibility mean? What does ineligible to mean? What is the next steps? Because it's impossible for us, as a small HR, to get back to each individual individually. So, that's what we're looking at, the technology gap that was mentioned in the presentation that we will be putting together. Time-wise, as I stated, we're going to put something up probably by January, and hopefully by the peak of our recruiting season, we will have this new applicant track in place.
Thank you.
Ms. Muse Aria?
Hello. Can I have some clarification on Slide Three, what is meant by positively impact student achievement by ensuring top performers are in all positions to accelerate student success and college career readiness?
So, what that means is that individuals that we're looking at in all positions, we want to make sure they are the best, talented, skilled, knowledgeable, so when they are in the schools, that you have the best of what can be offered for our students. If it's a bus driver, if it's a food service employee, if it's any position, a secretary, a paraprofessional, we're looking at some standards that we are developing. We have some standards for teachers and administrators. We have a Gallup survey that we use, and we're using that across the board. And that's what we mean from the beginning. We want to bring in quality individuals in our district. We are a system of choice, so we can choose who we want in our school district based on what we see the needs are for our positions that we offer.
And my second question is, in reference to long-term substitutes and creating a high-quality workforce, how do you make sure these substitutes are qualified to teach these courses in solving the problem of having college-prepared and career-ready students?
It's a good question.
Very good.
Very good question. So, what we've done, first of all, have, instead of just having individuals coming into the area of substitutes with high school degrees, we have increased the qualifications. Now, you have to have a degree in order to be a substitute. We also, after they get in, we have, I don't know if you've seen on our website, we have academies for our substitutes where they get training in regards to classroom management and training in regards to the subjects that they are probably the best knowledgeable about. We try to hire subs that have degrees in math, science, in those areas, or in elementary. What we find, though, is that we even are hiring subs that are certified, individuals moving in the area, and they're not quite sure if they want a full-time job, but yet they are qualified to go into the classroom. And once they get there, the administrators in the schools have a program to work with them to make sure that they fit into whatever that particular school's priorities are as a sub for that day.
Yeah, one more question. What can we do to solve the instability of guidance counselors in different schools? That some schools have an insufficient amount of guidance counselors, and they have 400 students to one guidance counselor?
So, that's not really human resources, and it is, but it's based on allotment, it's based on what the priority of that school is, student-based budgeting. What we do is, what is allotted, what principals or what schools want, do we provide the individuals? But we don't make a decision of how many in guidance that goes in a school, or if a guidance counselor does not go in that particular building.
And we're also looking at guidance counselor placement in terms of the ASCA, American School Counselor Standards, those ratios for placing counselors in schools, and so, we continue to work on that model. We are challenged in some areas because of school-based budgeting, but we continue to look at how we're going to staff every school and provide professional school counseling services throughout that building.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have in the queue, Epps, Eubanks, Mundy, Walla, Burrows, and Jacobs. Ms. Epps?
I was afraid I was going to have to follow our student board member. How do you compete with that? Well, so, I had a question about Slide 12, and I know that it's completely inappropriate to compare real numbers with percentages, but I'm going to do it anyway because I have a question about it. So, I was curious about the bottom of the slide with the total number of instructional vacancies growing since FY12 for students on the first day, and then versus, and I might be reading this wrong, but versus the top of the slide with the percentage of school-based positions filled on the first day and the trend in that. So, even though, not in real terms, in terms of the comparison, but I guess my question was, given the first, given those percentages, what does that number mean?
Thank you, Ms. Epps. First and foremost, when we look at our vacancies on the first day of school, that's just kind of a time and point measure to see where we actually are with our staffing. So, we poll each and every school to say, what vacancies do you have? What vacancies do you still need? What vacancies do you have, what's been filled, and what's in the pipeline? Typically, we have a number of responses. Sometimes, principals may have a vacancy, but they chose not to fill it because of student numbers are going up and down. Sometimes, we had a late resignation, and we haven't yet begun to provide a pool of candidates for that particular vacancy, so we're trying to fill it with a substitute. Actually, that, it fluctuates as we go through that process. And so, basically, when we track, we say, at this moment in time, how many literal positions are not filled in a building on that particular day? So, when we look at all of the positions, that's where the percentages come from, and then that's a real-time vacancy number at the end of the day.
Thank you for that. And then, isn't there a, actually, follow-up to that. So, then, isn't there a September 30 cutoff for, well, that's, no, that's enrollment?
For enrollment, but that impacts students and staff, I mean, that impacts staffing as well. So, for instance?
Right, because staffing is shifted based on?
Correct. So, there might be a school that was under-enrolled, and we would have to shift staff away to a school that was over-enrolled, and so, that does impact our staffing totals. So, as we go through the months of the school year, typically, years, years, years ago, it was very clean. We staffed, and we hired at the beginning of the school year, and we didn't do much until the next spring, re-upping for the August. Now, hiring happens year-round. So, we have just this constant roll of new people coming in, where our current staff are retiring or resigning or going out on leave, so it is just constant, whereas before it was a lot more static.
Okay. I'm asking this question out of my, you know, my day job. So, I work at a community college, and we have a teacher education program, and we have gone so far as to construct associative applied teaching degrees, which are very rigorous for specific areas, particularly in content areas that, where there's a need, math and science, as well as foreign languages, Spanish. So, my question is, for graduates of, and Prince George's Community College has that program as well, so, inasmuch as there are, you know, potential teachers coming out of those programs, are they at a level where they can be employed or, you know, come into the system after that particular degree?
Sure. Particularly with that particular program, they really need to have a four-year degree in order to be eligible for Maryland State Department of Education. Some of the individuals who go through that program have a four-year degree. What we've been doing with that group is, we have the option to enroll them in our resident teacher program so that they go through a Maryland-approved program. We also, if they have enough credits, and if the need is sufficient and it's a good fit, we can hire them on a good fit, we can hire them on what we call a provisional contract or conditional teaching certificate until they're able to get into the resident teacher program, or seek certification by taking additional courses that are required by the Maryland State Department of Education. So actually, the program at Prince George's Community College doesn't quite give them everything they need for Maryland certification, but we have worked with those candidates to actually help them become certified through our certification office.
Right, but it does provide a potential pool.
Absolutely. And we've hired several through that program. As a matter of fact, there are two in our resident teacher program this year.
Don't discount other community colleges.
No, we don't. We source very wide and broad, so that's not just the only one.
Okay. You mentioned, oh, okay. So with regard to the Prince George's Teacher of the Year, is any, is there any dialogue with the Teacher of the Year, or does, as part of their duties, do they communicate, engage in terms of getting feedback and providing insight into the experience in terms of a teacher having, you know, the best experience, both from the recruitment to, to get to a level where they're performing at a high enough level where we would reward them with this honor? So in doing that, in terms of cultivating that level of achievement from a teacher in particular, is the Teacher of the Year engaged in that regard?
Absolutely. So for the past year, we have leveraged our teacher leaders, which included our Teachers of the Year as ambassadors. They worked over the summer in terms of, well, first, we met with them as a focus group. They also served on our Recruitment and Retention Task Force to get input on their thoughts around how we onboard, how we recruit, what's the communication and engagement for candidates to really pull them in. We, secondly, involve them in all of our, we use them as ambassadors, for lack of a better term. We have them calling candidates. For instance, I used Tiffany Doster, who was the 2010 Teacher of the Year. We had several candidates. She was sourcing and working with them over the summer, and a couple actually called her because they're going to her school, so she provided real-time access. So Mr. Lewis, Ms. Dag, Ms. Iwoma, and Ms. Doster have been working closely with us to really refine our recruitment strategies in terms of the pulling candidates in, and ultimately, we'll be working with them on more retention strategies as we go forward. So that is a key role, and we know that there are many, like our finalists, we haven't actually had the opportunity to reach out to those, the whole, every teacher that was nominated, but that is in the pipeline for our, a new strategy this year.
Thank you.
They're a great group, by the way.
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
Ms. Epps, if I could answer the one question, we added 57.7 positions through balancing this year. And as Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan, right? As she, she talked about schools losing teachers. Actually, what we do is, we're really loath to take away positions from schools once Teacher of the Year has started. So if we think there's going to be a cut, we actually ask principals not to go and schedule those teachers for classes, so there's minimal disruption. But we did add 57.7 positions.
All right, thanks. I'm next. I have probably a couple of, a broad kind of question or issue to address with you, and then a couple of more specific questions. Let me start with this broad question. You know, in my, in my day job, I do a lot of work on labor management collaboration. And in particular, we have this joint labor management collaboration that is really beginning to understand that, how important it is to continue to have great relationships around issues around compensation and labor and that kind of thing. But districts that are heading toward real excellence have a much more significant and broad labor management relationship. And so they have very close labor management relationships around building employee evaluation and workforce planning, and around other things like common core implementation, closing academic achievement gaps, turning around low-performing schools. So I'm just wondering, when I, when I kind of look, it almost looks optically like you're confining your labor management relations to, to the core basics. And so I want you to talk more about that broader level of labor management collaboration that I'm assuming and hoping we're deeply engaged in.
We are engaged, and we are fortunate to have the unions very much involved with a lot of our work. In the performance evaluation, they are very much a part of the team. They're very much involved in how we are developing and processing that whole piece with the principal and teacher evaluation. In addition to the negotiations, there are always issues that arise. So we meet periodically, and if not monthly, every other month with our labor management individuals, because we know that, you know, as issues come up, we want to resolve it as a team. And, and not just for, not just for one issue, but for the broad issue for the district. We've been working very closely with, I don't want to name a particular one, but all of them have been involved with this whole big piece. And this is a big piece with this evaluation tool that we're utilizing. And they were very much onboard in supporting what needs to be done. I didn't say that I agree with everything we did, but however, we were able to come together and be on one accord.
And in that, in that workforce planning piece around recruitment, induction, and retention, can you talk about work that you're doing with the labor?
We hit a task force for recruitment and retention, and they were very much a part of it, because, you know, the big keys with, the big emphasis with recruitment is really retention. We're able to attract, and we're able to bring people in, but we have to do more to make them feel comfortable, want to stay here, want to, you know, live here in Prince George's County, and make it a home and a career. So they have been involved in our task force as we develop some of the things that we mentioned today, was because of some of the points and some of the ideas that they have involved with us.
Great, thanks. So my next question actually relates right to that, because, because you know I'm onboard with really this focus on retention.
Yes.
But a couple of recruitment numbers did jump out at me. All right, I looked at the fact that we get 2,745 applicants, and we offer 1,898 positions. That gives the average applicant a better than one in two chance of getting a job offer by Prince George's County. And I would venture to guess that when you're really talking about a talented applicant pool, you're looking at probably more like a one-to-four, one-to-five type ratio that you'd be targeting, so that you can be a lot more selective in your hiring process. So I know part of that is probably just a numbers game, but maybe you can talk about how we really do expand the pool, so that we get more to that, to that level, that we can be more selective in who we're bringing in.
And that's what we want to do. We want to get to that level, but we have to start earlier. I'll let Ms. Sullivan expound on that. But that's the goal, so that we get the best quality individuals or teachers in our district prior to them going to competitors around the area.
Thank you for your question, Dr. Eubanks. Actually, our numbers, if you think about it, it is really a little bit higher than two to one, because we have a huge group that starts at the top, but we don't necessarily offer to everyone. Our principals are very selective, and as we go through the different events, we've had principals and teachers participate in most of them. And we have talented candidates, but they're also looking, not just for the talent, they're looking for the fit in Prince George's County Public Schools. And so the number that we shared in terms of who we extended offers to was really called down by our school leaders and our HR team. So actually, we could have provided you with a larger number in terms of who's in the total pool, and then called it down a little bit, but we thought this was a little bit more manageable.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Monday?
Hello. Just had a quick question about recruitment of support and admin staff. What is, what is the office doing to attract talented support and admin staff, which we all know also impact the student experience in the schoolhouse, as well as along that same line, secession planning? So as people retire, we're bringing in talented young folks, or folks earlier to raise up to be the supervisor, because we have, as we know, a community full of young folks that will be able to benefit from some type of mentoring, or some type of training up for building supervisors, or something of that nature. And I've talked to Mr. Gaskins about this before, we talked about how we can kind of work on that. So I'm just interested in the support administrative role that the students experience in the schools. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your question. Actually, we know every position is very critical. And so we, all the time, the focus is always on teachers. However, when we have admin positions, they are posted. We've posted them, and they are scraped off of our particular website onto the Washington Post, or sometimes LinkedIn, and many other external job-based databases and job banks. We also post at some of the state center, unemployment centers. So we do have outreach for all positions. What happens a lot with our support positions, we can post, and we'll end up with 1,100 candidates on one single posting. And a lot of that, you know, it's really culling down and refining our job descriptions, so that we are really very clear about the talents, skills, and abilities we're actually seeking to fill a specific position. Right now, a lot of our jobs, post descriptions are fairly broad, so that does generate a large pool, which then inundates managers, supervisors, and staff to really get in and dive in and look at the candidate pool. That's where some of our complaints come from. I might have a really qualified candidate on a secretary posting, but there are 1,100 individuals. Out of the 1,100, probably 600 are actually qualified. I wouldn't want a manager or a principal to run us out of the building, sending them a listing of 600 candidates. So we first and foremost pull the top three most senior internal candidates, that they really are required to interview. And then they look at the rest of the pool to see how they best fit. So we know that our sourcing can improve. We know that there are many, many venues and mediums that we can leverage in our process, so that's part of our strategy moving forward. But as far as recruitment is concerned, we know that each and every position is very critical. So a lens will be cast on all positions, not just teachers, not just administrators, because we truly want to reach out and get the best and brightest. We are looking at how we message broadly about our school system, to include what are students hearing about us, like what's it like to have a career in Prince George's County? Our staff participates in career days, so we're looking at the whole continuum of our available candidate pool.
And what about the secession planning for retirees and people who are exiting the system?
So that's an area that we know we have to do a lot of work, and we'll be partnering with the Office of Talent Development, because human capital strat, human capital management is really a strategy that we'll be partnering with both departments. So the training, you know, it's nice to go into a position and know that if I am a secretary and I have designs on being an executive, like I want to work in the CEO's office, what are the steps and training that I need in order to reach, aspire to that position? That's something that we really have to work on. It hasn't always been a true focus, sort of happened by happenstance. So now that we have a new office, and we have more resources, we'll be able to refine our efforts in that area.
Okay, we have Ms. Waller.
Thank you. We are a county of diversity here in Prince George's County. Could you speak a little bit about what you're doing about multilingual recruitment?
Absolutely. So one of the strategies we employed last year was to heavily target universities where they had, they were quote-unquote named the best universities for Hispanic students in colleges and universities. So we kind of flooded their campuses with information, we had recruitment trips to that end. We always solicit candidates who are bilingual for all positions. So you'll see, a lot of times in our postings, it'll say bilingual candidate preferred. We want to make sure that our candidates understand that this is a metric or a skill that we need in Prince George's County. So there is a constant focus. I'll be partnering with Dr. Gonzalez to refine our targeted recruitment for those three strands we talked about earlier in the presentation, but it is a focus.
Okay.
I have one thing I'd like to add to that. We're going to be looking at growing our own. We're going to be looking at our students and try to market them to come back to Prince George's County in various positions. So we're looking at developing FEA clubs and other clubs, and reaching out to our students that we have here, so that as they go out, go to college, we can pretty much bring them back. But I know finances is a problem. We, at one time, we used to have our FEA clubs and, for teachers, and once they graduate, we pretty much indicated to them, if they would get everything they need, they have automatically a job back in Prince George's County. So we need to do that. We need to do more with marketing Prince George's County Public Schools with our communities here, so that we can be more of a choice also.
Thank you.
And Ms. Waller, just one other thing. Mr. Gaskin and I participated in a minority recruitment task force at MSDE, and part of the recommendations there were to really try to leverage state resources to support all counties across the state in that thing.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to follow up on the applicant tracking system that my colleague, Ms. Boston, referred to. You mentioned, you talked about the front end of when we receive the applications. Then you moved on to the part about, once we receive the applications, how you would respond to them. And I suppose, I'll just jump to the end of that process, that if someone has been chosen to be interviewed, what is your timeframe for responding back to persons? How are you responding back to persons that do not receive an interview? And if they're selected to receive the interview, how do you respond back to those persons?
So we do currently have communications built into the applicant tracking system. We, it is our goal to communicate with each and every person as they apply and work through the process. Mr. Gaskin described, you know, the different strands of communication that we will be posting online, so that candidates understand some of the terminology in this particular system. Outside of the system, in terms of, if I apply as a candidate, my status is updated as the specialist review, so I'm either posted as eligible or ineligible. Finally, as they move through that process, candidates, this is where it becomes a little dicey, because candidates want to hear right away. If I'm eligible, so I use the example of 1,100 candidates, 600 are eligible for a particular posting. A manager will select who they'd like to interview, they'll conduct the interviews, and then once someone is hired, everyone will then receive information back. But let's say I interviewed 10 people, and I didn't really particularly care for those 10. We don't want to communicate too soon that you're not going to be in the pool, you're not, you're not going to be selected, because we may have to dip back into that pool. At the end of the day, once an offer is made, that's when the communication should go back out to all candidates who applied on the posting. Now, I can't say 100% that all of that communication is still happening within the system. It's set up, but sometimes our candidates, there's, they get it, it's in their spam file. And so part of our communication is really posting it online, not waiting just for a system-generated response, but they understand what the process is upfront, so they can start checking as well. It happens, I can go into the system and look at my application and look at my statuses, or I can have the email communication. So we know that's something we have to tighten up, because it's nowhere near perfect.
Okay, so, starting in January, once a person goes for an interview, and you interview 10 persons, you know, over a period of time, so you're saying that a person would be able to go on, say, within 30 days, and find out if, what the final result is? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I'm saying they could go in and look at the status of their application, sure. But you're asking me for a finite timeline, and so I could say it could be six weeks, but it really depends on the position. Some of our postings are open and continuous. We might have 10 positions, but it's not listed on that particular posting. So we'll say, yes, you're eligible, but as we go through the process and start hiring, we're still hiring 10 positions off of one posting. So it's hard to define a real finite, but ultimately, I will say that at least six weeks is plenty of time for us to get back with candidates.
Because I hear that's where a lot of frustration is from my constituents. They don't, there's nothing finite, you know, it just goes on and on, and they keep wait, they can wait a year, two years. And this is something- And they keep wait, they can wait a year, two years. And, uh, this is something that I think that, you know, we probably need to tighten up, uh, from management, uh, whoever they interview with. Uh, my third area is about customer service and cross-training in, um, HR. I, it's come to my attention that oftentimes persons can call, um, the office and ask a question, for instance, about accreditation, certification. And depending on who they speak with, they can get three or four different answers. How are we going to narrow it down so that the, a person or department gives the same answer?
Sure. Very good question. So, one of the things that Mr. Gaskin highlighted is that part of our focus moving into January is to really train our staff. Uh, we have great staff members, but I can think back, I started with the system in oh seven and we haven't had a robust training protocol within human resources. Also, I'll use certification as an example. There's two different levels of certification offered by the state for staff. And so they will shift many times a question to a lead certification specialist as opposed to a technician responding to the question. But you're right, when people call, that's part of our effort is to be consistent and accurate and, and quick about answering questions. So that is definitely a focus.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
How are you, Dr. Debbie?
Hi, how are you?
I just wanted to thank all of the HR staff for all that you do every day. It's one of the most important divisions, uh, in the school system. Um, so thank you on behalf of the board, uh, if we didn't already mention that. Uh, one of the cons- one of the, um, so most of my colleagues mentioned all the other questions, so I'll do my best to be brief and not be redundant. But, uh, you know, we interact with school board members from all across the state, uh, and one of the things that we hear, um, on a, almost weekly, monthly basis is that Prince George's County does the absolute best job at training our teachers, our assistant principals and principals. And they do everything they can to take them. Um, and so that, that goes into the retention piece. But when I talk to our teachers and our assistant principals here, the reason, one of the many reasons that they choose to leave is because there aren't many opportunities for growth. Uh, so for example, I've talked to so many assistant principals here that say, you know, it is almost impossible for me to become a principal because PGTPS prefers, uh, candidates that have not served in PGTPS. Uh, I've talked to assistant principals who believe that if you're a, and even teachers, if you're at a certain age, you, nine times out of ten, you won't be selected because your time has passed and we're looking for a younger group. And so, yes, we have retention issue. And yes, other jurisdictions will gladly take our most talented, uh, professionals that we train, that we recruit, um, uh, our most talented individuals. But I think maybe the issue is, and maybe you can help me understand, is that why aren't we promoting or working with the talent that's already in Prince George's?
So that's an excellent question. Um, as I said, um, and we've said in many other presentations, retention is a systemic initiative. It's systemic work. And a couple of things that I'll address, you're right, we lose top talent to our neighboring districts all the time. And we literally look at our best and brightest walking out the door. And, you know, it's easy to say it was because of compensation that was one of the reasons, but your point about succession planning is absolutely on point. Um, the work that's happening in the Office of Talent Development with the Principal Pipeline, where we have assistant principals who are being groomed for principals through the ALPS program, supported by the Wallace Foundation Grant, is in place. I know that, um, Mr. Anthony and his team have put together a lot of different, um, components such as a teacher leadership, uh, group.
Right.
That is really providing our staff with opportunity to understand teacher leadership from one perspective. It's, we have our union partners participating in that. But I'm gonna let Mr. Anthony talk more about succession planning and talent development.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Um, so I think it's important to note too that we, and Debbie started, Ms. Sullivan started speaking about, um, how we're leveraging, um, not only our Wallace work, but our focus around human capital strategy as a district, to look at how we creating pipelines and succession planning for both teachers and administrators. And I guess I'll speak a little bit to the administrators. Um, we're in the process and have been in the process of continuing to develop programs for our assistant principals in the district.
Right.
In fact, in January, we're gonna start a new rollout of some assistant principal training. But I want to go back to one of the things that you said in terms of, are we recruiting within our own? So this year in particular, as you know, from the Wallace Grant, we started an aspiring leaders program for several, um, it was all in-county in-house folks. Um, and we were successful in actually placing four individuals in our internal program into principalships, all sitting current assistant principals in the district.
Right.
Same is true for some of our, our preferred providers. May, may sound like they're coming from outside, but even the principals who participated in, for instance, like a new leaders program, those were internal candidates who were teachers in our program. So we are looking internally to build the capacity. I think, um, Ms. Sullivan hit it right on the head. We have to continue to look at it. How do we expand opportunities for succession planning within the district in all positions? So, Mr. Burrows, I'll be glad to share and bring back to the board in January, our rollout plan for building, uh, systemic leadership in terms of assistant principal training that we'll be conducting throughout the year. And I'm happy to kind of preclude with all of this that I just received a few moments ago, our renewal for the Wallace Grant Foundation, um, so to help us continue to do this work. So I'm really excited about that as well.
And how much was that?
It was two point three million dollars.
Ah, nice.
And, and Mr. Burrows, just to follow up, because I am one of those Prince George's County employees that had the opportunity to go to another county, but I'm glad that I returned. But even this year, when you take a look at our assistant principals and principals that we've hired in the short amount of time that I've been here, all of them have been Prince George's County homegrown folk, except for one principal is coming from the outside. And all of our assistant principals that the board has approved have also been within our county.
Ah.
So I'm very aware of that concern and we're doing our best with working with both HR as well as Doug to make sure that we can continue that pattern.
I'm glad to hear that because it's, you know, I'm not joking when we say that we hear from other jurisdictions that we want, we want your talent. And when I talk to our, our teachers and assistant principals and principals here, it's because they can't get a break. Um, can you also respond to the, the, the point that I made that, uh, there's this perception that if you're a teacher and you want to become an administrator, if you're an administrator and you want to become a principal, or if you're a principal and you wanna, you know, become, uh, you know, a central office person, that if you've reached a certain age, uh, it's not possible for you. There, there's a strong, uh, uh, and, and if you look at your, the new leaders, uh, program and you look at all the programs, these are amazing programs, but, you know, I love young people. I am a young person. Um, but there, there's a perception when I talk to some of the employees that have been here for such a long time that, that they don't have the opportunity here. And so they're, they're looking at other places.
Yeah, I think, uh, so that is a perception. Um, and the reality is that we have to pay attention legally. So we, we wouldn't practice, have discriminatory practices in that regard if we discriminated from giving anyone an equal to opportunity to a position. And so, uh, and I've heard the same thing. I've been in the system for twenty-two years. And so, you know, in, in my previous role, as you know, I've probably heard that a lot more than I do recently. Thanks, Val.
[laughing]
But what I will say is that we, we have to take that seriously, you know? So, um, yesterday, for example, I had a, a conversation with an individual. And, and this is one thing I also put out there. When people have, and this, I think Ms. Boston raised the same concern, that if people aren't getting feedback in particular of going through the assistant principal and principal process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I actually meet with them. So if they send, they say, well, I haven't gotten any feedback. I met with a gentleman yesterday who hadn't gotten any feedback. We'll talk through it. We'll try to look at feedback and we'll give them some suggestions on how to get better. Um, I think if you have particular names of individuals who felt they haven't been given an opportunity, and I know Mr. Gaskin and myself have met with several people to kind of talk them through, um, and give them some suggestions and give them some feedback. But it is a competitive process. And so what's important for all people to understand is that we do want the best and brightest leading our schools as well. And we have to be selective about who we put in those places. And people should be current with terms of what the language of the day is and what the, the knowledge of the day is important. So if you have folks, for instance, and I'll use your example, maybe a seasoned person who hasn't had an opportunity to really investigate and, and grapple with common core, hasn't had an opportunity from an experienced, a spiritual standpoint of getting that opportunity to, you know, lead collaborative planning and things like that. They have to be prepared to speak to those things, regardless of how young, how old, whoever they are. They have to be able to speak to those things because it's reflected in what our kids need today and how to build a capacity of teachers in the district. So we'll continue to be open to those discussions. I'm sorry, I get very passionate about this work, so I'll be quiet, but we, we are trying to address all those issues.
Okay. And I guess my last question for the buzzer goes off, goes to, uh, what are we doing with, uh, Bowie State, uh, College Park, uh, and University of Maryland, Baltimore County, uh, to, to really, uh, to ensure that, that, that their curriculum, uh, meets, that their curriculum is accurately training and preparing our teachers, uh, for what we actually need?
I'll, I'll give that back to them, but I can tell you, and, and from a leadership standpoint.
Right.
It's, it's Dewayne? It's Dr. Arbogast. But I can tell you, I can tell you from a leadership standpoint, we developed leadership standards in, in relative to assistant and principal training in the district. And so each of the universities that we partner with have to align their curriculum and their, their current instruction to our leader standards. So the context is the same. And so we continue to, to work through that process.
Okay.
We actually, uh, the best way to do that is to maintain really good relationships. And what I found is the universities have been incredibly responsive to our requests. And I'll give you just a few examples. We, um, I don't know if you saw the article in the Baltimore Sun this week about Baltimore City suspending a lot of pre-K kids.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've been talking about that issue and we've actually put a lot of professional development. The University of Maryland has actually rearranged their early childhood program to address behavior challenges and early learning. So that's an example of the changing. We're, um, talking to their math department about how to incorporate the math practices in the common core. So it's this constant dialogue back and forth that, uh, allows them to adjust their, their practices. They're also implementing, um, newest internal assessments at the university that are much more reflective of what we're looking for. And we've been pushing all of our university partners to really look at cultural proficiency and working, using an equity lens and working with students. And so they've all been very, very responsive to that.
But I also think that our universities go beyond in helping to prepare our teachers, but also our administrators. We also have partnerships with them and we even have, um, individuals sitting before you that are in doctoral programs as well. So it, it spans from just the teachers all the way up to central office level with the leadership partnerships that we have with them.
Great. Thank you.
All right, we have Jacobs, Higgins and Valentine left for round one. Anderson, Epps and Ubanks for round two. Ms. Jacobs, you're on.
Thank you. Um, congratulations on the, um, Wallace Grant renewal. I think that process started a few years ago at twelve point one million dollars. So, twelve point five, that's even better. Um, so congratulations on that. And thank you for the presentation, um, Mr. Gaskins and your staff, um, on behalf of the board as well. So, um, you know, we, fortunate or unfortunate, um, human resources has been revised, reconstructed. Um, employees have been subjected to reapplying for positions time and time again, year after year. There've been many changes in HR. So looking at page seven, slide seven, um, in terms of division structure, what I would like to know is, uh, something more tangible. So what best practices are you implementing based on this new structure? What are the sources of those best practices? And specifically, how do you intend to, um, I guess, affect change in a way based on a lot of what I've heard my colleagues say and not, you know, so I'm not repeating what they had to say, but essentially, how are you, um, gonna use best practices to make the kinds of changes or improvements that you've stated?
Hello? Okay. So a part of that is training. We are participating with a national organization with the, uh, urban, uh, school program academies. And they have a best practices for human resources, um, that is used with, um, the largest urban school districts in the nation. So we're looking at a lot of those, um, characteristics. And a big piece of that, of course, is restructuring the, the way we train our individuals, the way we can have individuals to, um, be more responsive. And that's one source.
Can you give me an example?
Um, one example is that they have identified, um, particular ways that you are supposed to measure the quality of your candidates by use of Gallup, by use of other instruments that has been proven to be successful. So that when we identify our individuals, um, it's a better research on those rather than individuals that we, um, select independently. The other piece is, um, we're looking at the sources, the type of sources that we're using and what other individuals, other school districts are using. Um, they're using more web-based, they're using more internet, they're using, um, different kinds of resources than what we have been doing in the past. But also, um, Ms. Sullivan can tell you a few more of the benchmarks that we have and she's gonna be developing in the workforce planning strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. One of the measures that we have is looking at sources where we recruit and hire. So what we've done is we've transformed how we are actually interviewing and looking at key competencies that are required for success in the classroom. That is aligned with our Danielson framework by which we are actually observing teacher performance in the classroom. We take the Gallup strata, the Gallup insight tool results. We look at GPA. We look at the source, the university where the teacher was, um, trained. At the end of the year, we look at how successful they were in terms of the principal's assessment of their performance. That data ultimately then allows us to look at our return on investment. Was that teacher successful? If it, if we got a, if we received or hired a cadre of teachers from, let's say, the University of Maryland College Park and they did extremely well in certain types of schools, we know that that's a viable source for us to return. So part of a metric that we are tracking now is source of hire so that we know, we keep going back to the pool where we've had successes, which will actually hopefully drive teacher performance and ultimately student achievement at the end of the day. But it is predicated on, you know, the supports teachers also receive in schools as well as, you know, how they feel they've been on-boarded and their hiring or employment experience as in the county.
So, so I think, I think some of that addresses the specifics around hiring and, um, I guess in what you want to see in terms of retention. What I would, what I would prefer to see in a system oversight presentation such as this one, because it's sort of the board's opportunity, maybe once or twice a year, to really delve into, um, the substantive work of, of the different divisions. So for example, um, these four division structures have work, workforce planning, human resources, operations and sta- staffing, performance and evaluations, and employee relations. So I, ideally, if we are in fact using best practices or about to implement or feel we need to do that, then I would actually like to see that this is what the best practices and the, or the best practices and trends in this area. Um, these are the school districts that we're using in terms of making comparisons. And this is how this particular category will change or be improved based on our implementation of that. And then what does that look like? Um, so this is certainly not intended to, um, to push back, but it's saying, we, you know, we get a lot of what we need to do, we need to start training, we need to continue, whatever. So I really would like to see something more substantive in terms of, um, of what the structure changes look like.
We certainly can provide that for the board.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have, um, actually goes to, um, but this is actually quick since you're standing out, so you don't have to, so when, part of the Gates, part of the, with the Gates work, one of their concerns was that we had, uh, too many evaluative processes going on at the same time. How are we doing with that?
So I think, uh, Mr. Ryan is actually gonna answer that, but I can say that we took the Gates, uh, foundation advice along with looking at the other ten districts in that intensive and accelerated partnerships.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been able to refine a lot of our work around teacher and principal evaluation.
So do we still have, do we still have more than one track going on at the same time?
No, actually, the mandate through race to the top, we have, um, the state actually requires everyone to be evaluated every year based on student performance. But we do have on and off cycle for professional practice.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So my other question goes to labor relations, I think. Yes, labor relations. So what do you think is the number one cause or challenge regarding a backlog of appeal cases?
Well, since I began in March, we have had the director leave. He left in Ju, the end of June. And right now, I'm working as best I can to get all of the cases responded to. A lot of times, it takes a lot of investigation because you want to make sure you're making a fully and fair decision or recommendation. And I think we are doing a great job with the backlog. And I do believe that going forward with the addition of another position, we will be able to eliminate that backlog. And my also, my focus is not having those cases. I've been working with 2250, been working with PGCA, working with ASASP to sort of kind of flesh out what the issues are, and let's see if we can't come to some sort of resolution before it becomes a grievance. So we don't have to worry about actually responding to the grievances and to the appeals when possible.
So are your, was your data specific to backlogs in your office, not those that come to the board?
It's specific to my office, yes.
Okay, so we probably need a deeper review of the appeal cases that are backlog that haven't come to the board yet.
Right, I handle all the cases that are filed at the CEO's level, or our office does. And then once they reach the board level, it's, we're there to support.
Okay, thank you. My other question, so can we get a, what, right now, how does it, how would an employee know regardless of what union they're in? How do they know consistency or guidelines with regard to discipline? What document do they have to pick up and say, okay, this is, these are the guidelines for tardiness? These are the guidelines for insubordination? How do employees know that there are disciplinary guidelines in place in the district to ensure that there's consistency in, in how discipline is, is given?
Well, currently, we don't have a matrix that would tell you, you know, going back to my old job, we don't have an attendance monitoring policy that would be, that is disseminated to employees to say, okay, you know, here's what an occasion is, you rack up three occasions, you're going to get a reprimand. You know, seven, you might be recommended for dismissal. We currently don't have that.
You think we should have that?
An attendance monitoring policy?
Do you think the district should have a process or have some document that suggests to employees that there's consistency in how we discipline? And I'm talking more than just the handbook that employees get when they're employed that says, you know, these are your benefits.
Well, and, you know, it's one of those things where I think it's good to have a broad outline. But as I indicated earlier, you know, you need to have flexibility because you can't pigeonhole every single circumstance into, okay, if you do X, then this, this is the repercussions. I, and it's funny, because I have been thinking about attendance monitoring policy because that's something that we are dealing with a lot, our leave issues. I mean, there is a tremendous amount of time that I spend, that the labor relations staff spends, that attendance monitoring staff spends. So we are looking into this, and maybe one of the suggestions will be to have some type of attendance monitoring. That's a little bit easier to pigeonhole than, you know, allegations of misconduct and, and those types.
So I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I guess the only pushback that I would, that I would present, if any, would be that, but there are standards. Employees should know, they should have some idea. If you're charged with commission of a crime, are you suspended with pay or not? There's some basic standards that I think the district could look at and apparently have for some years, but at some point, and beyond. So for example, tardiness or attendance issues in general. But, but I would actually like to see something more concrete that any employee without regard to their union affiliation, that they know what, what they're facing in terms of conduct-related and performance-related.
Well, and I, I think the employee manual that we've been working on, that's still in the draft stage, would be something that will assist us in, in doing that. And yes, absolutely, that's, you know, you're, you're touching on a lot of issues that I, I'm not dealing with on a day-to-day basis, at least a weekly basis, that yes, we are thinking about what's the best way to let employees know in, in specific situations what's expected and what the potential consequences are.
Okay, and then I know my time is up, but then, so we don't have to do round two, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you. I, I just, my last question, which I guess goes to Dr. Davis. Can we get a chart of executive level salaries from a region perspective that looks at like work? Obviously districts that look like Prince George's County, but doesn't have to just be in Maryland. So I'd like to see that from the region. So, and then based on that region work, what's the comparisons in a different region with similar demographics that we have? And I think it's important to be able to see, we talk about our compensation studies, and I think the last one that we had was years ago, and I don't think there was ever any actual work that came out of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
Thank you very much. I guess my first question goes back, Dr. Arbogast, you had mentioned that there's an effort to hold schools harmless once school has begun if there needs to be population shifts. Can you talk about how we can hold all schools harmless instead of doing the best we can? Because it is obviously quite disruptive to the classes in particular in the schools in terms of that.
So I think it's a matter of scarce, allocation of scarce resources. So for every dollar you spend, that dollar has to come from somewhere. And we set aside a budget for staffing, and then budget also gives us a pool of money to work with to solve problems as we see. So that's really, when we talk about balancing and adding 57 positions, that money actually came from a pool of money purposely set aside to address issues that you might not anticipate. So, yeah, we would very much like to avoid all disruptions if at all possible. But in some cases, enrollment does not justify it. What we do, our instructional directors have grown very adept at looking at monitoring enrollments with principals over the summer. So and I'll give you an example. So let's say that we have a first grade, and we've projected 75 students, three teachers, but the enrollment's hovering around 47. So we, the instructional director and the principal will start conferring and saying, your enrollment's hovering around 47, which only justifies two teachers. Do we really need to create three classes when there's the high risk that you might be losing that? The other piece is that principals have become very savvy about not filling positions, so they'll have a vacancy, but they won't necessarily fill that vacancy if they think that their enrollment's not going to justify the position. So when we take positions, nine times out of 10, the position we're taking is a vacant position, not a filled position. So I would say about three years ago, we were moving staff more. Last year and this year, we were really able to avoid that phenomenon of actually moving a, a person from one school to another.
Well, I know it happened in one of my schools in particular.
It still happens, but we've gotten much, much better in anticipating the enrollment. Now, another challenge is then enrollment increases over the year. So we do all this balancing energy, right, from late August to September. But we still have a mechanism throughout the school year. We, we had a meeting just yesterday looking at over-sized classrooms. So we're still addressing those kind of issues.
Right, I guess I'm thinking of those schools who, if the numbers were the same and school hadn't started, would have lost a teacher, if we can hold them harmless, because it's just, it's a real problem.
Yeah, I think we do the best we can to try to do that.
I guess I would tie it into, if I'm understanding correctly, the, the second reader financial review is talking about in the last, since July, we have, what, about 10, 15 million dollars that we're moving around, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we know that in the beginning of the year, we're going to have surpluses because of vacancies, et cetera, in addition to what we put in the budget, maybe we could tap into those monies earlier to be able to support holding schools harmless so that, that school environment, so.
Always looking for options, ma'am.
Okay, all right, well, that works. Okay, thank you. I also had a question about the evaluation. I think Ms. Sullivan was saying that the evaluations are every year, is that correct? Or, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan. That's not Gaskins, right, Mr. Ryan, your name is?
I will never live that down. The, the state has asked, and it's in Comer, that a teacher receiving an evaluation every year. And what's, what's different, one is if you're a specialist, if you're a media specialist, you don't have growth and, and that doesn't apply, although we do evaluations for everyone every year. But for teachers and, and principals, let's just talk about teachers. If you are on cycle, and teachers would be on cycle every three years.
That's right, okay, thank you.
But it's only professional practice, they do growth every year. And whatever they get, the year they're on cycle carries over. So they'll get an evaluation every year, but the year that they're not on cycle, that effective or highly effective will carry over and be calculated with the growth score.
Yes, I just know how intensive, time-intensive doing evaluations is. And so to, I thought I had heard it was going to be every year, or it is every year. And that would be a tremendous amount of.
The professional practice piece, which is a growth piece for professional growth, is time-consuming.
Unless there's a reason to do it. Wait, I do have another evaluation question. So the evaluation process has changed, and we're using different models, if I remember correct, if I was, that was what was said, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when we talk about, well, how, how acclimated are the principals and the teachers to this new model? The response was, and very, very appropriately, and I, like my colleagues, really appreciate the, the work of human resources. So the response was in terms of really what the output was, what, what human resources has done to push out the information and make sure everybody's informed. What is the outcome? How do you know that what you've put out in terms of training to teachers and to principals has been effective in terms of what they know about this process and how comfortable they are?
Early in my tenure in this position, there's a lot more that they need to know. We are very, very early into this process. We just met last week with the principals and spent, you know, 90 minutes with three different principal groups to make sure to review all of the process procedures. There's some new forms as we've changed to the highly effective, effective, ineffective. We work with our wonderful unions to, to get collaboration on those forms. So there's a lot of, of work that still has to be done in making sure they understand. We have plans to go out and meet with the different groups. We're going to have regional meetings for assistant principals as well as for teachers. We'd like to get to the union reps to review the, the processes with them. And then we're going to have to have some follow-up at the end of the year with some surveys for understanding. And we also have to look at the reliability of what we're getting back in reference to the data, as I mentioned. That's going to be a critical piece.
So with, with that all moving targets, then we have our staff dealing with Common Core, with a number of initiatives coming in, an evaluation process that they're being held accountable for. And yet we haven't really fully trained everybody in terms of how to do it and make sure that understanding is. How is a teacher or a principal going to feel comfortable about their ability to, to be seen as effective?
Well, I, I wouldn't say that we haven't fully trained everyone.
I'm not saying you haven't done, right, go ahead.
So I wouldn't say that, but I would say that it's a, it's a, it's a moving process. And we kind of knew, in fact, in talking with the state just today, there's this discussion that the evaluation isn't going to be done at the end of year one, or year two, or year three. It's a four, five, six year. We've got SLOs that our curriculum staff have been working hard with our teachers on. So there's been a lot of professional learning around it. But there's still a lot that, that they still need to understand, the scoring aspects of, of how this is all tabulated, and all of those different pieces that go into changing a full evaluation. And we're, we're working hard to ensure they get all of that information.
I hear that and really appreciate all the, the work that is involved. I guess my thing is, is that are we holding the teachers and the principals to one standard? And then moving, how are we accommodating that, that things aren't all in place?
So Ms. Higgins, one thing that we're doing this year, previously, we did not have monthly systemic principals meeting. And we understood that with all of the work, the new work, that our schools were going to have to do, that we were going to have to implement monthly principal meetings. So with those monthly principal meetings, last month, as Mr. Ryan indicated, the principals were introduced to the teacher evaluation piece. The principal evaluation piece got kicked off over the summer. So that's a little bit more down the path than the teacher evaluation piece. So what we plan on doing to make sure that they do see this connectivity among the Common Core, among the SLOs, as well as the FFT, I've used how many acronyms at this point? And the evaluations, I apologize, is making sure that during those monthly meetings, they're actually bringing samples and that we're helping them, people who are sitting before you, make those connections. So for instance, in January.
Could I interrupt, because I, if I could?
Mm-hmm.
Because I am convinced that there's a very active process to integrate this into our system. My question is a little different, and that is, if a teacher is doing the very best they can and has been a successful teacher, and now they have to do Common Core, they have all these different evaluations, and here it is November, and we haven't really kind of coalesced everything. How is a teacher, especially if we're talking about retention, how's a teacher or a principal going to feel confident about their ability to be successful on whatever it is they're going to be evaluated on?
So you're talking more about how are they going to get the highest rating that they feel?
How can they feel that the work that they're doing is going to be evaluated when we're, we're still working on the evaluation tool? Not that you all aren't implementing it in an organized, well, that, that's my thought.
I, I would say that all the pieces that are involved in the evaluation process have been fully developed. There's been extensive training, I know, from Doug Shop regarding FFT, so that they understand the framework for teaching. So all of those pieces and understanding of what they're being observed on, and all of the pieces that are in the SLOs and the development of those SLOs, most teachers have developed those already.
But I think it's through the, also, Bill, I just think it's through the feedback that we give. I mean, IDs are constantly in the schools and giving feedback to the principals, and they're using those evaluation tools in order to measure, okay, this is where I think you are right now. This is where the work is, and this is how I can support. And principals are doing the same thing for, for teachers. So it's not that you're just getting feedback at the end of the year. You should be getting ongoing feedback through informal observations, through collaborative planning, through communication.
I, I guess I'm, and it might be my ears.
Maybe I'm not understanding, I apologize.
No, no, because I'm, I'm hearing we're kind of putting things together and we're implementing it. It's going to take a number of years to do that. And if I'm a teacher or I'm a principal, how do I know what I'm going to be evaluated on? But it sounds like that piece is, is really pretty solid.
Pretty solid.
Okay, let me ask my other question, and that's all I had on recruitment. I guess I'll have to do a whole round, thank you, round two. Thank you.
Ms. Valentine.
Thank you, everyone. As someone who's been employed as a school teacher in a county, having uniquely been exposed to the process of applying, this is very personal to me. Also, having a spouse who's held four different positions in the county and who's a graduate of the school system, it's also very personal to me. When I was appointed, I said, one of the first things I want to do is dedicate my time to working on recruitment and retention of teachers because I believe that is where the achievement happens and where our system is going to improve. I'm thankful that with this, the new, new system that we have, Dr. Davis, putting the HR department under your office and being so active in this process, and your leadership so far has been demonstrated and will continue to, hope that you are taking an active role in this. So just wanted to say that. So many questions, but I will say, we talked about customer service and the idea that customer service falls within the communication department, and that when people are oriented, oriented to the system, that they are going through a customer service process. As we all know, that there, there are certain cultures within systems, that when you introduce one new person, regardless of how they've been trained, they often adopt the culture of that system. So my recommendation is to have a customer service training for your current staff, regardless of when they were brought into the system, to ensure that there is a change in the culture in how we address questions to our office from employees. You are the door to our system. We can do all the recruitment we like, the board members can. We can do all the recruitment we like. Board members can go to every top five, top ten college in the country. The board can negotiate the best salary in the region. But if we lose people's paperwork through our process, or if we tell people that they are not qualified for a position when in fact they are, when we have people who have applied to our system, who've gone to, one example, Montgomery County, and became Teacher of the Year in Montgomery County, but previously applied to our system and decided not to because they lost paperwork, that is just unacceptable. So I would like to see, I don't know how you would audit the iRecruitment system, to find out whether there are certain flaws in the system and how information is getting out, and the timeliness of responding to people, letting them know where their application is in the pipeline. I think questions about when we are going to college fairs. I've spoken with your staff and other people have talked about the time of year in which we are trying to recruit from the Bowie States and the College Parks, and when other districts go. And are we going after they've already gone and skimmed the cream? And you can speak to that, whether that is true or not, and how we, as a board, any policies that we can implement to push the process of reporting back to you what this, the needs of the system are, so that you all can go out and get that recruitment done earlier on in the process. Because as we're, as we're competing, we want to be able to at least get it at the same time as other, other regions. Couple of things. So when you're going out to recruit, I'm assuming you're being signaled by applicants of what they feel is important for why they're going to apply, whether it be salary, or professional development, or support, or readjustment allowance, or anything like that, how you are signaling to someone like Dr. Arbogast about our need to increase support for professional development? Because I'm hearing that we're losing out on a ton of applicants because they're saying that we're not getting the support. How do you signal to someone like Arbogast, who's come before us and has said that that is a, a priority for, for him? And the last two things, one, my child is in the school system here, two children, in fact, they are in classrooms with paraprofessionals. What the criteria is for both paraprofessionals and for substitute paraprofessionals. In one of the days, I shadowed a principal, finding out that it's harder to recruit substitute teachers to become paras, because apparently we pay less for paraprofessionals. And many of the time when they call paraprofessionals to become substitute, they don't answer the phone, or they don't respond, because they're waiting to get the call for a, for a full day substitute teacher. So on the day I was there, there were actually three paras who were out, and there was no one to cover for them, because even the substitute teacher line wasn't being responsive. What policies can the board do to support making sure that we have paras in classrooms where you have children like my daughter, who's only three years old, or my son, who is five? And the last thing, you talked about us going with you to college fairs. Is there a way to get your staff into the schools to see exactly what the principals, teachers, and administrators are going through on a daily basis, so they can see the, the world through their eyes and to better empathize with those who are calling?
Let me start with the statement you made last in reference to our staff and going out. When we mentioned school support teams, that is our staff. And they go out according to what schools assign to them. They meet with principals and administration. They have a scorecard, metrics, to find out, you know, what the issues are with our new teachers, as well as some of our senior employees. So we are, we have that, but we are extending that, because we know that's important. So we're trying to get them to be able to go out at least two or three times a year. We've started that, so we're going to extend on it. As far as the recruitment is concerned, the cycle for teacher ed programs and recruitment, colleges make those schedules. They determine when they have the teacher recruitment programs. So one of the things we would like to do is prior to the teacher recruitment, where we have been very successful, is to go out, we've started that, and talking to the students in seminars. And we, we meet with the supervising teacher. So we used to do that. We're going to do more of that, so we can kind of grab them, so that we'll have their attention prior to others. I don't want to go back to twenty years ago, when we had a twenty, thirty-two-foot RV. We were out there all the time, and we would be at colleges recruiting, talking about Prince George's County, to let them know we were, definitely need them in our school district. So with the addition of two recruiters, a coordinator for recruiting, as well as what we have, we think we're going to be able to do a much better job in reaching out to, trying to get candidates into our district. I understand what you said about customer service, so we surely will take that in consideration. Through the various leaderships we've had, we've had some, but we surely can go back and revisit that. As far as the substitute paras and substitute individuals, if we know about what the concerns are from schools, we can address those, because we have a, a lot of individuals who are trying to be paras. Now, the salaries are negotiated. That's not something that we can change in regards to the salaries for a substitute versus a paraprofessional. But we surely try to make sure, if we have a high absenteeism, you know, if we are informed by the principals, we surely can work with that and put in a sub-para in until the paraprofessional comes back.
Thank you. Round two, we've got a few folks. We've got Anderson, Epps, and Higgins.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ubank, he didn't, the question about signaling to Dr. Arbogast about professional development needs, and also looking at the iRecruitment website.
Well, when I mentioned the gaps in technology, it was recently revised with the iRecruitment and enhancement. But the big piece is with getting the applicant tracking, so that we can, when a person applies, we'll be able to track that from the time that they apply. We can communicate with them after they get on that, so that we don't lose touch with them until they actually hire. So that piece.
Is that in place now, or is that to be in place later?
That's to be in place. Right.
Okay, round two. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Epps, and Ms. Higgins. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, you mentioned briefly that pay of faculty is one of the reasons that we lose some of our faculty. I'd like for you to just speak briefly on the impact of pay on retention. With particular attention given to critical points, maybe within the respective ranks, where pay appears to be the critical reason, or critical, to losing faculty.
Sure. If you look at our retention data over the past three to four years, particularly around the time when we were experiencing significant budget challenges, we were pretty stable for a while. We did, our retention was pretty high when the economy was bad. That's the first year we went to single-digit retention in Prince George's County public schools in a long time. But as the market started opening up and other districts started offering more pay increases, we had faculty and teachers that were very committed to our school system and hung in there for about three years without receiving raises and step increases. However, this year, even though we had some measure of increase in terms of salaries and, and as well last year, we did lose a significant number of teachers this year due to compensation. Some of our teachers could leave us without having been given step increases for several years, go to another district, teach there for a year, and then return to us and recoup some of the, the steps that they lost in, in staying in Prince George's County. And that's particularly a, a challenge for us. We don't like to lose particularly staff in the five to fifteen-year mark. That's a lot of experience and expertise going out of our doors, but it was a challenge this year. Fortunately, I'm happy to report that we have engaged a lot of the teachers we lost and who, they've, many have expressed interest in returning. So even though they left our ranks, we still communicate with them, and hopefully we'll be able to retain, or have that top talent return to Prince George's.
Ms. Epps.
Okay, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around where we are on the technology solution to, as it deals with, with recruiting. And I go back to Ms. Sullivan's example of the, you know, several thousand applicants, and then you have a pool of six hundred. So obviously, you wouldn't send to managers six hundred applicants for a position. So I, I guess this is the, also related to Mr. Valentine's question, is because I'm still having a hard time understanding what's going on with the technology. And then in, in addition to that, as I was sitting here, and then I looked over at my colleague, who's a student member, you know, and then I looked at her phone. And again, I thought, you know, in terms of communicating back to potential applicants, this is the day of the app. So someone applies to PGCPS, it, you know, they get an email back and says something like, if you would like more immediate information about the status of your application, text five, four, three, two, one to this number. And then as they progress through the system, they get an audit, when as the staff who update their status, as that goes into the system, then they get a text that they're, you know, to their phone. So explain to me where we are, given, you know, the, the opportunities that technology provides us, understanding that there's a budget attached to that. But, you know, even now, without the app per se, just going in and the computer looking for keywords and numbers of years of experience and all of that, so that you're not sending six hundred people to a, a principal or a manager, you're sending twenty? So where's the disconnect there? Help me understand the technology, because I still don't understand the technology.
Sure. I'm, I'm happy to do that. And basically, the way iRecruitment has been implemented, when we initially purchased it, it was a fairly vanilla version due to budget, obviously. But we knew we needed to transition from paper and email to some form of applicant tracking, and that was back in two thousand eight. Throughout the years since then, we've made some enhancements to iRecruitment, but at present, it basically serves as a repository for a lot of the applications that are received as people apply. It's not, as you described, an integrated applicant tracking system that allows the candidate engagement and candidate management on the front end. Those components have not been implemented to date. I'm not, I'll have to defer to my colleagues in IT to see if they've even been purchased. But at present, it's serving more as a repository. It's not an integrated system. So for instance, when I apply somewhere, it doesn't do the word scrape or key word scrape to further refine the pool. That's done manually by our team. That's one of the reasons why I shared how many applications, how many staff, because it is a fairly labor-intensive process at this point. That is a goal, as Mr. Gaskin expressed, you know, concerns about the gap in technology, and how we have technology and we may not be using, utilizing it to its fullest advantage. That is part of the core work. As I transition back into recruitment, it's going to be our focus, because we know how candidates are treated. That determines how they feel about us as an employer, and actually sets the precedent for their employment as we go into the hiring season. So it is an area of great concern for us, and something that we are working diligently on to correct and improve.
Thank you. And there was a conversation really early on in, in the presentation today about the teacher-principal work group. I just wanted to get a little bit more information about that, about, you know, what's being discussed there. Is the objective of the work group in ongoing, you know, is it ongoing, or are they working towards a specific objective? And is, is part of that work relationship building with education training programs?
Right. So I'll start, and I'll let my colleague, Mr. Ryan, transition and respond to the rest. The, the teacher evaluation work group was implemented in two thousand ten to help design and craft our teacher evaluation process, and it was funded through the Gates Foundation grant.
I'm sorry, is that the teacher-principal work group?
Well, it's been combined. So it started out as teacher evaluation.
Oh, so that's evaluation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, then my question's answered. Thank you.
Okay, certainly.
Ms. Higgins.
Thank you very much. I wanted to talk about recruitment. Well, before I do that, let me ask about retention. Are we doing exit interviews to employees who are leaving our system? Getting a lot of exercise in my stomach.
I am. I should stay. We know exit interviews is high-profile, especially for the board and with us as well. As teachers, or as staff exit our school system, they are provided with a link to complete an exit survey. We have extremely low response rate on those exit surveys right now. We on a, we do conduct face-to-face exit interviews upon request of managers and staff, employees who are exiting the system. So that's certainly an area that we.
How easy and friendly is the exit interview?
It's very easy. It's a Survey Monkey.
Like a Survey Monkey?
Yes, it's Survey Monkey at present. We are currently, we have a team working with IT that is looking at the exit process, that it will be online, and the exit interview will be automatic. So if I'm an employee and I want to resign, I follow that process online, and included in that is the exit survey. So we anticipate that our exit survey numbers, in terms of participation, will increase significantly.
Is that, and that'll be anonymous then?
Yes, I believe it is.
You would know the profession, but won't necessarily be.
Yes. The, the exit survey is anonymous. They will be telling us their role or type of employee they were, and we'll be able to gather.
Okay, and if they want to say where they were.
Correct.
Okay.
And they can also request face-to-face if they so choose.
All right. One other thing in terms, is there someplace in writing that an interested employee who might be interested in becoming a principal can know what the process is? Because I like, Mr. Burrows, have heard from people, they don't even know anymore how they can become a principal, because there's two or three parallel kinds of options. Sure. Well, whatever. Yeah, you can stay there. Sorry. I have other questions.
We're revising the actual process. We have a new document that we're going to make sure all employees get, and we're also in the process of revising the procedure of the C-4113, which you all know about, so that we, we're having all cleaned and typed.
So, so anybody could see it at any time?
We're going to see it, then we're going to post it on our website and on the app.
Okay, and where, when will that be?
January, so I'll make sure.
Oh, okay. Well, you're busy. Okay, thank you. Let me go to recruitment. Is that you, Ms. Sullivan?
That is.
Yeah, okay, good. Can you talk about what it, we, we all are very aware that the difficulty in getting good staff after July fifteenth, and have looked at, are there administrative changes that can be done in order to be able to fill what we know will be at least eight hundred vacancies, and not wait till the, the last few weeks before school? Can you talk about what administrative changes have been put in place, or you're working on, to make that process less arduous?
Certainly. A couple of things that impact our ability to place. We look at our transfer processes that have to occur in accordance with our negotiated agreement. We also look at the availability of candidates and when positions are actually available for us to fill. Part of our ability to really match candidates with schools based on their preference and what, and what principals are looking for, is to really know vacancies ahead of time. That's a challenge. Sometimes staff don't notify us until rather late. What our goal is, and this is not an administrative process, it's more of a practice, we start matching up candidates with principals very early, so that at least, if I'm at a turnaround school or a priority school, I know which candidates are really interested in my particular school. And we have to implement better candidate engagement strategies, so that we keep people in the loop.
Right.
Outside of that, it's very challenging when we have to work with the July fifteenth notification deadline for resignations. And we all, we're, we're fairly transparent about that. We know teachers are sourcing, looking, and seeing what's the best, best fit. They're looking internally, so if I'm a teacher and I want to go to a certain school. They're looking internally, so if I'm a teacher and I want to go to a certain school, I'm networking and working with that principal. If that doesn't match, they might choose to go to another district and may not notify us until extremely late. That's a significant challenge.
But are we looking at, if we know we have at a minimum 800 vacancies each year, are we doing things in order to be able to not have to wait till July 15th to have the start done?
So, a couple of things. We have to notify internal staff of opportunities as well as potential new hires. So, part of our process really needs to be, how do we message to the bandwidth of all staff internal what our vacancies are or what the opportunities might be, as well as balance our new hires and try to get those, them matched up with potential placements? Ultimately, our internal staff have opportunity prior to new hires at the present time.
Okay.
But in addition to that, Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Higgins, you've already reached out to your professional development students at Bowie State, I believe about a couple of weeks ago. We had that recruitment fair. I believe that you already had a few signed contracts from either UMBC or Baltimore County of 17 contracts for...
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about those?
Yeah, certainly. So, we have a bandwidth of PDS students that are in Prince George's County and are not in Howard, Montgomery, and Arundel. So, we host a variety of events, and we offer open contracts the whole season, particularly to those students that are student teaching in our schools. But, for instance, a couple of weeks ago, we had an event at the Bowie Comfort Inn. This week, we met with a group at a seminar class at Northwestern High School. We also were at, we were at Bowie State interviewing and talking and watching portfolio presentations. So, our outreach is fairly broad in terms of trying to pull in. Our challenge, again, is we really source and try to hire our PDS interns. Sometimes, they don't want to sign an open contract, they really want to know their school placement. So, that's where the matching process goes.
Okay. And then, one last thing. I know we've talked about, you know, what we're looking at in the future and how we're pushing things out. Do we have specific benchmarks? Are there specific benchmarks so that you'll know whether you're successful in some of these challenges and accomplishments, like timely communication, customer service, responsiveness, management by data and results? What benchmarks do you have for these visions that you have and have expressed?
Certainly. So, part of the work in the Office of Work for HR Strategy is to really manage by data. We need to track when a candidate applies to when we first communicate, to how we ultimately end up onboarding and hiring. So, we have created and will continue to create a litany of benchmarks that are going to be measures for outcomes. So, for example, if we have a recruitment trip and it costs X number of dollars, what was our return on investment? And then, at the end of the year, we look at how well those teachers performed in our schools.
All right. But I guess my question, too, is, let's say, customer service, or as some of my other colleagues said, you know, somebody applies for a position. Are you measuring, what do you anticipate, I think you said six weeks, for somebody to get the final answer, and other suggestions in terms of more frequently up until that final answer? Do you have developed benchmarks to evaluate what your, what your goals are in terms of accomplishing the vision that you have?
We actually do. For example, in our customer service center, they have a survey that we provide. As a matter of fact, a couple of our offices have surveys that we track and measure, just service in general. The records office has a survey based on customers that come in and how quickly their responses and their requests are answered. And so, those are the data, that's the data we review and use to inform improvement in services, how we tweak or look at policies or practices that guide the work. So, that will be implemented across all offices within the division. So, time from application to closing it and the communication strand and time will be measured, and that will be driven back to respective specialists, respective offices, so that we can continually improve the services that we offer. If we don't have the data, you know, it, I'm not saying it wasn't ever collected, but it was not collected and then utilized as, as much as we could. So, that is a goal of the office now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I see no other round two comments at this time. So, I would like to thank our colleagues from Human Resources for an informative and substantive discussion. Dr. Bob, do you have any last words for us, or are you, you're just going to go back to your seat? Okay. All right. Again, thank you very much, and thank particularly all of the staff in the rows, who I know did not get a chance to come up here and talk about what you do, but do all the hard work that made this great presentation possible. So, thank you so much for that. Am I forgetting? I don't know. Dr., Ms. Jacobs, you want, you have anything for follow-up? Recap the, what the, well, what we'll do, I don't want to do it later. So, yeah, for, for, did you...
I don't mind doing that.
Yeah, just tell us what, what you have for follow-ups, okay?
I have expand the, you want additional information on expanding the information on Slide 7 when it comes to vision structure, to include best practices, which school system is implementing this practice, and what improvement is now going to look like in Prince George's County if we implement it. I also have that, we would like additional information on the number of appeals that we currently have, as far as the backlog is concerned, and then a chart for the executive-level staff salaries for school systems of similar demographics.
All right, we good? Thank you. All right, moving on to, there's nothing today on our consent agenda. We move on to Agenda Item 8.0, Budget Consent Agenda. Before we move, we do have a registered speaker for public comment to speak on Agenda Item Number 8.4, Staffing Agency Agreements with Choice Incorporated. I would read my script, but I guess that Mr. Kahn has heard it once or twice before, so I'll turn the floor over to David Kahn. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a fairly small contract, as contracts go in this district. However, it's instructive for how these sorts of things are brought to the board, and the implications go far beyond this particular contract. It also has some HR overtones, and so this is a perfect meeting for this to come up. First of all, this is being brought late to the board. It says here that the service team will be from October 2013. That means these three people are, apparently, are already on board, and one has to wonder why they ask you for approval if they don't care whether they get it or not. What if you say no? I don't know how or what sort of budget document the administration used to start this thing going, maybe purchase orders or something, but this is not the right way. I don't, when do these vacancies begin? If these vacancies, if these positions were vacant in September, why didn't they bring this contract to you in September or early October, so they could start these people under a proper contract? The contract isn't attached. Now, I've been told that board docs that's available to the public is the same board docs you see. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I've been told. If so, you don't have this contract in front of you. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. If you don't, then how in the world can you vote to approve a contract you've never seen? This contract also appears to be open-ended, but I can't tell that. It's supposed to be open until the positions are filled. What if that costs more than $44,800? How many person months does this pay for, and what happens if the positions are still vacant at the end? The other big problem with this that applies to all of these things that come, it doesn't say whether this has been competed, full competition, limited competition, or sole source. Now, there are sometimes good reasons for a sole source contract. However, if you don't say that it is sole source and spell out those reasons, people in the community start thinking cronyism, improprieties, things like that, you don't need that grief. It should spell out the level of competition and justify anything that's sole source with real justification, not just, "We like them," or "We've worked with them before," but really that they're the only people, the only organization that can do the job. I hope that one of the board members, somebody there, will pull this for discussion and get the answers to some of these questions. With that, I'd like to wish the board, administration, the staff, and the community a very happy Thanksgiving. With all the problems that we have in the school system, with all the problems that we may have in our personal lives, there's still so much to be thankful for. And with that, and I've always wanted to say this, I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn, so much. All right, before I move to formal motion, I have Ms. Higgins and Mr. Burrows.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull 8.3 to ask some clarifying questions.
Okay, 8.3 is pulled from the agenda, from the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda.
Eight point five.
8.3 and 8.5.
And I'll also do...
Okay. I don't think we need seconds for that, right? No, I didn't think so. Okay. Thank you very much.
Eight point four.
Okay, let, okay, so, which eight, I have 8.3. Are you saying 8.4 and 8.5?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any others?
None at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, okay. 8.3, 8.4. So, does that cover you, Ms. Jacobs, or is it you have addition?
8.8.
8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.8, and Ms. Epps. We are moving 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.8, and 8.10 from the budget consent agenda. Are there any left? Let me count. Okay. So, I will now yield the floor to Dr. Davis for an introduction of budget consent agenda
Thank you. 8.1, December 2013 expenditure requirements. The total cash requirement of the current expense fund of the Board of Education for the month of December 2013 is $161,69,603.40. 8.2, January 2014 expenditure requirements. The total cash requirement of the current expense fund of the Board of Education for the month of January 2014 is $144,820,96.8. 8.6, approval of the change order number seven in the amount of $76,580 for extended consultant calls for extended services at the Hyattville Area Elementary School. 8.7, approval of the construction contract proposal for pod conversion at Kettering Elementary School. The total budget implication is $1,716,451. 8.9, approval of the construction contract proposal for the pod classroom conversion at Catherine T. Reed Elementary School to Goal Services Incorporated in the amount of
Thank you. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve Items Number 8.1, 8.2, 8.6, 8.7, and 8.9 on the budget consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve 8.1, 8.2, 8.6, 8.7, and 8.9. Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps.
I made an error. So, 8.9 is what I had, what I would have pulled if I didn't make a mistake, but thank God for a question period. It's okay, I'll just do it within the construct, I'll do it within the construct that we're in right now.
But before you do that, what did you pull?
I pulled 8.10.
Do you want that pulled?
No.
So, let's really reverse that, so that we can pass 8.10 in this motion. So...
So...
So, what I'm going to ask, then, is just for a revised motion, so you'll...
Or an amendment.
To switch it, right.
I can, okay, so I move to put back in the consideration 8.10 ratification of the FY 2014 salary improvements for employees paid pursuant to the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel Units 2 and Unit 3. Put it back there.
That's been moved, moved and seconded?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? I do then want to tee up for you to go back to give us a briefing of 8.10, and then we'll...
Thank you. So, 8.10 now is also before the board for approval of ratification of FY 2014 salary improvement for employees paid pursuant to the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel, Unit 2 and Unit 3. The total budget implication is $3,881,624.
Thank you. So, then the motion now on the floor board is for 8.1, 8.2, 8.6, 8.7, and 8.10. Is there any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, those budget consent items have passed. We will now move on to Agenda Item 9.0, which is non-consent agenda items. I will start in order with Budget Item Number 8.3 and open the floor for discussion.
Higgins?
Higgins, okay. I don't, I have all these numbers, so I don't know who called what, so just remind me.
Sure. I guess my questions would be to Mr. Sharon. So, my questions on this really have to do with, we're talking about $13.9 million, almost 14 million, right?
No, ma'am. 8.3 is the, is the assignment, this is an agenda item that comes to the board probably six, seven, eight times a year. It's, I think the item you're speaking to is Agenda Item 10.1.
No, I mean, maybe, but on the, what I'm looking at is 2014 reassignment of authorized permanent FPTE for period September 20...
No, ma'am. Agenda 8.3 is the 2014 appropriation reassignments, over $100,000 in a major category for period September 20, 2013 through 20, through October 24th, 2013, involving 12.5 FTEs.
And the paperwork behind that board action is this document here.
Somehow, I'm not sure where that paperwork came from, ma'am, but on board docs, there's a separate...
Well, then, let me ask you, just to make sure that I'm, because I can move it to 10.1 if that's the case. So, this, the paperwork that I'm looking at says that it's realigning special ed part-time salaries, realigning support special ed programming and services, Head Start, emotionally disturbed. Is that under 8.3, or is that part of 10.1?
That's 8.3, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, my question has to do with, in the first one, it says, "Support part-time salaries for dedicated aides and substitutes for the first and second quarter." Does that mean we're not going to support them in the third and fourth quarter, or...
No, no. What this, why this is coming to the board is that when we, because of the magnitude of all of the multiple millions of part-time salaries, the way... the, of the magnitude of all of the multiple millions of part-time salaries, the way that the system is traditionally operated is that a portion of part-time wages are distributed on the front end. And then as, as the dedicated aides start being used at the different schools and the costs start accumulating, then there's a conversation between...
Okay, I'm going to move quickly. I got it.
Okay, surely.
On the second one, in terms of $165,899.5 FTEs.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that, that's establishing new staff, or that's paying for staff that has already been there?
Yeah, that was a function where in the special ed department, there were some, some speech therapy vacancies, and they wanted to get some different therapists, audiology and for occupational therapy. And so they're making those adjustments.
Okay. I'm going to move down to number five on that, where it says plant part-time sal, plant part-time salaries. It says part-time salaries for temporary custodians.
Again, that's, that's the same, that's the same as the other part-time wages. We do not, we do not allocate it all on the front end, because part-time money can get spent pretty quickly, and then if we put it all out there at the very beginning of July...
Can't measure it.
Our experience has been is that it gets spent without really, with the, with the level of control that we would like.
So, temporary custodians, why wouldn't they be regular employees? That's not a, that's not a budget question?
Well, if it, if it's a custodian, whether it's a temporary or full-time, and we're, and, and this is specifically for the temporaries, for part-time staff.
Okay. The Head Start program, it says there's a reduction of 14 vacant Head Start positions, and then it also says it doesn't have any kind of impact on the programming. Can you help me understand that?
When that, when that grant application was submitted, it was submitted not having the volume of FTEs that are in the school system's budget that are allocated. And so that's why there's no, there's no fiscal impact, because all we're doing is, is making the correction in terms of the FTE count that's supporting the Head Start program.
So is that as a result of sequester, or we, we had more positions allocated than we really were going to fund?
It's, that's correct. We had more FTEs than we had funding for, and as well as what the program would support. So when the, when the application was made, the count of the FTE was different than what we have.
I see. So what we put in for what we wished, and we got what we got.
Correct.
Okay. And then the only other, well, no, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Although, I do have one other question. How does this document differ from 10.1, the financial review? I mean, why would one thing be under budget consent and the other be first readers? I'm, I'm a bit confused about.
The, and this is, it's a sort of a subtle nuance, but it's important to clarify it. What, what we just went through is, is entitled a reassignment. And by, and by definition, a reassignment is a transfer of money within a category. When we get to 10.1, that's a realignment where it's transfers between categories.
Got it, okay. Thank you, it's very helpful. Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Chair.
Other questions or discussion about 8.3? Ms. Epps.
About the Head Start, number six, so... I, I'm, I think I, no, I don't understand. Anyway, so the reduction of the 14 vacant Head Start programs, I guess I'm just sensitive to the discussion in the county around expanding opportunities for pre-K. And so, inasmuch as Head Start is a part of that, I mean, I understand you don't carry vacant positions, you know, from year to year to year, but couldn't, there's not a plan to need those positions?
Not in, not in FY 14 for this Head Start program, yeah.
So then, for future years, as we, you know, put flesh around the, the, you know, a program or improvement plan to expand Head Start and other types of, you know, pre-K in Prince George's County, then that funding will have to be put in place by Head Start's normal funding sources?
Well, I, I think, I think some of the conversations that have been taking place is that the, relative to pre-K initiatives, that that's separate and apart from a head fund, Head Start, a set of, set of funds.
Okay.
There's a pre-K, but not Head Start pre-K.
Okay.
Head Start, Head Start is restricted funds, and that's totally federal dollars. So, pre-K is a different funding, and we're not anticipating any increase in Head Start funds, and in fact, we're trying to deal with the effects of sequestration and federal cuts. So the pre-K is where we're looking to expand.
Seeing no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve item 8.3 now in the non-consent budget agenda item.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Item 8.3 has passed. Item number 8.4, who was that? Anybody admitting to pulling that one?
Well, I'd be glad to ask. My question actually was specific to the timeframe. Could you address the current status of the positions and whether or not there are, in fact, people already employed?
Be happy to speak to that. This, this item was, a little bit of backstory for you. This item was put on the agenda because we, we chose to. This really does not require board approval. But because there's been conversations about Purchasing Department in the past, because we're trying to do, we're trying to improve operations there, provide better support to our capital program, capital budgets. And we had some, and we had some, and had some staff vacancies. And so, very much like professional services, legal services, this temp agency services, the administration is, is within the, the rules to just go ahead and issue this contract. But I, but in talking with Director of Purchasing, I thought it made sense that we just put this on the agenda for, for purposes of clarity. And so we do have three vacancies, and we, we have engaged a, a temporary agency to help us with some of the contracts that we're working with through Capital Projects. And so I brought this, put this on the agenda for that purpose.
So I, so the, and that was based on the amount, right? Because when I looked at it, I did kind of question what, you know, why it was sort of before us in the timeframe? So it, was that what you're saying in terms of, it's just within the administration's authority to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought. And so the next question, I guess, then, obviously, then now you kind of raised, there was a reason that you thought maybe you should bring it here for, for whatever reason. I hear you say transparency or whatever. So, I, I would say that to reduce the number of questions, and if it's something that we don't approve and it is within your authority, do it.
Understand, and again, this is a learning process.
I got you, I understand. That's why, but I, but when I first read it, I, the date was what stood out to me, because it's October and we're in November. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions about item number 8.4, I will entertain a motion to approve item 8.4. It's been moved, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 8.4, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention, the motion carries. Item number 8.5, discussion?
Yes, I guess this question's for CIP Director or Mr. Stukes. Hi, Ms. Woodhead. You know, I see this change order, but I'm, I'm wondering when the other three major change orders or additions will come to the board. It's been brought to my attention, actually, for over a couple of years now, there's been a back and forth between the board and the administration, where the administration has agreed on every occasion that Crossland Auditorium would receive lights, curtains, and a sound system. These are basic necessities that are in every auditorium, and Crossland should be no different. And I'm not, and on more than one occasion, Dr. Hyatt has pub, when Dr. Hyatt was here at formal board meetings, has publicly said that those items would absolutely be in the auditorium. And so I just want to, you know, use this venue to ask you directly, why, why are there still concerns about the basic necessities for every auditorium? Just trying to, I guess, understand where the problem lies.
I think I probably don't have a complete answer for you, because those decisions were made previously. But we concur, and we've received direction from the leadership to add those items, and so they will be forthcoming to the board. They were actually bid in the project as alternates and then not accepted at the time of award, and I'm not sure exactly what the events were there that contributed to that. There is a basic sound system, but there's not really a performance sound system. And we have been getting prices from the contractors, you know, similar to what was there at the beginning, but we can't hold them to that. And we will be bringing those to the school board and having those elements added to the design. We agree.
Thank you. So moved.
Any, no other questions? Was that a movement as well?
Absolutely.
All right. Not yet? Are there ques, other questions? No, okay, well then, I'll take Mr. Burrows as moving that we, that we approve 8.5? I heard a second. It's been moved a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 8.5, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Item 8.5 has passed. We are on to item 8.8.
Thank you.
Who's 8.8, discussion?
Yes, thank you. So, these are basic questions, but I know I've had constituents asking me as well about process in terms of Tulip Grove. So, my question is on the change in the additional classrooms, and it specifically says, "Based on projected enrollment." Is that from the boundary changes we had, which increased the numbers at Tulip Grove, or future? So what led Principal, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Ms. Golson, but you're standing there.
That's okay.
What made, I guess, Principal Dawn decide that, or determine that he felt four more classrooms were needed? What was the basis, other than just projected enrollment?
Well, this is another one that I think has a story that's rooted in the past, because the enrollment really hasn't changed, but the four classrooms are needed to support the existing enrollment and to hold that steady going forward.
Okay.
So, it's not projecting a change in boundaries or anything else, it's just actually recognizing something that I think should have been recognized at the beginning of the project to maintain the current capacity.
We did have some boundary changes that should, that improved, I shouldn't say improved, but increased the numbers at Tulip Grove. So I'm assuming that would impact it or did impact it then? Okay.
Probably at the beginning.
Okay. And then the other question was, first of all, the, the backup information in here is good, I mean, it's, it's good to have the history included in the board packet, so I appreciate that. And then the other question is, which probably will be addressed at a CIP meeting, but have, how are your plans going in terms of the options that are going to be available for the school and students moving from, you know, whether, there's a massive move from the building to make sure the renovations are, are going as planned?
We are identifying options for swing space, including staying onsite as well as offsite options. We're doing research on those options to make sure we understand the feasibility and cost and pros and cons associated with those. We are scheduled to attend a meeting at the school on, I believe, the 3rd of December, and we'll, you know, we'll bring those items for discussion.
So, I'm glad to make sure that the community is engaged and is involved in that conversation. And if you could just, and, which has already been noted, to keep me informed of that.
Yes, thank you.
And I would actually, if possible, like to get a overview prior to that, that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'd be happy to do that.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval of item number, which item is this one now? 8.8 has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item 8.8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 8.8 has passed. We are now to item number 8.9. Discussion, Ms. Epps.
Hi, I just wanted to get a better understanding of the timeline for this particular project, and I'm sure it's in here, but I think I missed it.
So, this is actually a, a good timing in terms of the award, in that we would like to get as much of the construction work done over the summer as possible. And this is lots of lead time for the contractor to begin to order materials, get everything in place, all the long lead items, so we can really stage it properly. Because at that school, of course, swing space is not readily available. So the plan is to, to do the work over the summer. Thank you.
Oh, move for approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve item number 8.9. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item number 8.9, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Item number 8.9 has passed, and that is all of our items in, under the non-consent agenda items for this evening. We will move on to governance unfinished business second readers. I should note that I would generally take these three together, but given that our student board member cannot legally vote on item number 10.1, I'm going to take them as separate motions. So, let's see, so what I'm going to do now then is I'll yield the floor to, to Dr. Davis. Why don't you introduce all three, and then I'll take the motions as, as separate motion?
Thank you. Items 10.1 to 10.3 on the unfinished business agenda are before the board for approval of the following: fiscal year 2014, financial review as of September 30, 2013. The expenditures that are supported by a transfer between existing appropriations totaling Board policy 3500, naming of school district facilities, dedicating areas of school district facilities or grounds, and erecting monuments. Board policy 1500, parent and community advisory council.
Thank you. So colleagues, again, I will start with item number 10.1 and ask for a motion to approve item 10.1 on the governance unfinished business. It is moved, may I have a second? It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Burrows?
Mr. Sharon, a financial review, according to the highlight section, is a area where...
I'm sorry, according to which section?
The abstract and the highlight.
Oh, yeah, ab, highlight.
It defines what a financial review is, and it talks about the purpose of ensuring fiscal stability to the school district. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And also, the other function is to meet the evolving needs of the school system.
Yes, sir.
So, for example, the, there's a line item here to remove asbestos. That would be a category that would fall under the meeting the needs of the evolving school district. Is that right?
There's always changes that have to be addressed, yes, sir.
Absolutely. When I look at this document, and, and can you give me an example of a budget item, a budget process initiative? So something that the board would discuss in the budget season. So for example, if I wanted to add 20, you know, I love reader recovery. If I wanted to add 20 reader recovery teachers, would you recommend me doing that in this document, or would I wait to the, should I wait to the regularly scheduled budget process?
Well, it actually depends on the, on the urgency of the demand.
Right.
You know, what, what, these, these financial reviews that come periodically, usually three, maybe four times a year, tho, those are issues dealing with the current year.
Right.
You know, right now, Dr. Maxwell is preparing the FY 15 plan.
Right.
Which will be presented to the, to the board on the 12th. And of course, there's all kinds of avenues and opportunities to adjust that financial plan. So, for giving your example, if there was a, you know, a, a need that was, had demonstrated itself in any number of ways, either through, through staff bringing it to the board's attention or bringing it to themselves...
attention or bringing it to themselves, then that would be communicated to be addressed in the current year. So, it's really, it's a, it's a function of urgency, I think.
A function of urgency, okay. That, that makes perfect sense to me. I see a lot of these items that I believe are not financial reviews and I'll give you an example. There's a space here, art teachers and FTEs. That is not, that does not meet the standard of ensuring financial stability, nor does it meet the standard of an urgent evolving need. In fact, what that is, is a budget initiative that should be taken up in the regular budget process. And so, I'm having a hard time understanding why this budget initiative isn't a financial review. If you can provide some clarity?
Sure, I'll try. The reason why that item is on this review is because in order, in order to implement it, the board's got to approve the FTEs and also there's a category shift.
Right.
Of funding. And in, and in, you know, the, the role of the administration, Monday through Sunday, is to be evaluating the needs of the school system. Dr. Maxwell has been very, spending a lot of time out in the schools, making observations, talking to principals, talking to teachers, talking to people in the community, talking to staff, getting a real solid sense of the, of the needs of the school system. So, that item came to his attention. It came to the administration's attention. I suspect, I think he's mentioned one time before that, I think this item actually came up the last time this review, was that there's also, there's also going to be some, some resources allocated for, for our teachers in FY15. So, he's got a whole lot of plans that he's trying to implement. Some of the issues are, are more urgent than others. This happens to be one that's in the current year.
Well, I mean, and colleagues, this is important because we've been discussing, I know Member Coffin and Member Anderson have led the discussion around the budget and as you know, budgets are about priority. And when you say that in this document, each line item should demonstrate an urgent need, I'm not convinced that, and I respect Dr. Maxwell going out and doing that, but it's important that we make data-driven decisions and when I look at the data of our school system, you know, we need, we need 10 math intervention specialists, we need 10 reading specialists, we need to expand pre-K and that discussion happens around priorities through the regular budget process. This is not the regular budget process. This item, and I'll go into other items, is not an urgent evolving need like cleaning the asbestos. This item does not ensure financial stability of a school district. And when we talk about our priorities, we're in a season of, of limited funds and so it's important that we place our money where, where, where the impact is needed. And when we have students that are not reading on a grade level, cannot do basic math, it's important that we send those dollars there. And I'm not sure, this, this is not a data-driven decision from, from what I, how does this align with your goals? And that's just an example and I'll move on to the next thing and you can respond.
Mr. Burrows, I'm sorry, just help some of us understand, which item are you referring to specifically?
10.1.
I know 10.1, but just-
Page three of-
Within, within 10.1-
Sure.
You're pointing to one of these things that you said you don't believe is a budget priority. Which one are you referring to?
Page three of four, arting the, art teachers-
Art teachers, art teachers.
And 10 FTEs.
Okay. All right, I just, art.
And I'm not saying this is not a priority, but what I am saying is that we have more urgent priorities and a financial review is to address a matter of urgency or a matter of fiscal stability and this does not meet either of those standards. And if we're talking about priorities to move the district forward, I think the money will, that should be taken up in the regular budget process.
All right, I got you. Go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think you get the point, but if you're giving me more time.
Well, no, I was giving you time to finish that sentence and then there'll be round two real soon though.
Well, to finish the sentence, I also have concerns with other items that I'll bring up in round two.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, I guess I had a couple-
Ms. Higgins, excuse me, if I could just respond to that.
I'm sure, please.
So, I think Mr. Sharon gave a good description. Dr. Maxwell is very much looking at obvious holes that we have. We staff PE and music teachers, we have about 116 for elementary school, but we only have 49 for art teachers. With the staffing formula, some of our schools are only having art one day a week, which means that some of our students actually aren't even getting, they only get one art class per quarter. Art is part of the report card and I think Dr. Maxwell was looking at that kind of staffing one day, I mean, one person a week and the chance that some kids might not even get art in a quarter and I think he's trying to address that issue. So, I, I get your, your argument is actually not about art, it's about-
Right.
It's different, but I just wanted to kind of give you a context around what you're going to see in a lot of these, because a lot of these financial reviews are really coming out of academics and what Dr. Maxwell is doing is he's looking at where our holes are. Many of our holes created over the last three years and he's trying to plug kind of the holes in the dam. So, I just wanted to give you that context on that particular item.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about a number of issues, but let me follow up on, on that one. I guess, I too feel that this is making a decision based on a budget priority and like, when we're talking about receiving the superintendent, the CEO's budget in just a couple of weeks, so I'm not sure why it's, it's showing up here. And I, I think that the evidence on art teachers is significant in terms of showing the impact it can have in terms of academic achievement and I think equally strong is the impact of media specialists and schools counselors. So, I, I have trouble having this conversation just about art teachers without looking in where we are in terms of the holes and the gaps with school counselors and media specialists. I think we've heard time and again, and I think there are 10 to 15 schools that don't have any school counselor in their school at all, much less how many of them are part-time. So, I, I support that discussion in terms of that that doesn't seem to be, it seems to be a budget initiative that is worthy of being part of the fiscal year budget process. I also ask questions about the, there are two items in this list that seem to be capital projects. So, I guess my question is about that. One of them is for my colleagues on page two, security services, providing $2 million to support the installation of fencing around temporary buildings. I'm in favor of that, but isn't that a capital project? And then the William Schmidt Nature Center to receive $1.1 million to support the purchase of new mattresses as well as the construction of a new pavilion, new obstacle course, and a new nature trail. I have, if anybody wants to take a tour to William Wirt with me, we could, we could talk about needs in, in that school as well. So, they seem to be capital projects.
I would say that is a very close relationship to the capital budget process. Those two items came to our attention during the financial review. While there, while there might be some capital funds available, the administration, my office, took the initiative to include it on, in this process.
Okay.
Ms. Higgins, I, I just wanted to add about the security fencing. Because the process would, is long and cumbersome, we wanted to be able to provide the fencing around the temporary locations in conjunction with, while we're doing the installation of the card swipers, the video cameras, the electronic buzzers at the same time. Our goal is to have that security initiative completed by June 30th and we also wanted the fencing to be done around, so that it could be completed by June 30th as well.
So, you're saying that this, this, the fencing initiative is part of a coordinated effort and-
Correct. So that we can complete that whole security process to ensure our students are safe.
My colleague encourages me to ask the question about whether we can recapture this $2 million from capital or projects?
That I'm not sure, I'll have to ask and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll take that off my no list then.
Okay.
I have some questions in regards to the chief, the staffing positions. It says the Office of the Chief of Human Resources, Mr. Gaskin. I'm sure you need staff and so it's, and, and it says three FTEs. So, it says the amount is $454,000 and three FTEs. So, is there a way to understand what the cost is?
The, the budget estimate in terms of this action is 454,000 and the, the three FTEs is the, this is related to the performance office?
One document says three FTEs and one document says one FTE.
Yeah, it's, it's the-
I'm looking, the document that I'm looking at is page two of four, which was-
Yeah, it says one, but it's supposed to be-
Well, you know, that's another question because the first reader, last time we met, the, it said it was going to be an increase of 26.5 FTEs and this document says it's an increase of 24.5 FTEs with the same dollar amount.
I need to bring back to the board clarity in that, I don't have an answer to that.
Okay. Well, I think they were the two FTEs out of Office of Human Resources. I don't know, is that something that we can?
Can you tell me where you reached this?
In yes, yes, uh huh. If you go back to the last board meeting, when this was, yes, the last document was as a first reader, it was the same, same presentation, but it was three FTEs, it was 26.5.
So, all of the numbers are the same, but it went from one to three or have the numbers changed as well?
No, no, it went, and said in the front, it said increase 26.5. This document says increase 24.5 and it's clear that what it came out of, yes, the budget numbers are the same.
Okay.
The FTEs from the Judy Hoyer Center, was that in response, it said that the State Department requested that the positions be removed from the grant. Could you talk about?
Yes, ma'am, that, that was an item where the feedback, direct feedback we had from the state was that the, the incumbents that we had in occupying those FTEs, given the salary structure and given their, their personal earnings, from the state's perspective was, was basically absorbing and creating too much overhead for the, for the grant, not leaving enough resources to implement the grant. And so, that-
So, it's a staffing issue we felt we need.
There's an adjustment in that regard.
Okay, all right. And so, when it says the dollar amount and then it says and staff, that's included? So, additional funds in the amount of, I'm looking at transportation and one FTE and the additional funds in the amount of 84,955 and one FTE? That's not additional monies, that is?
No, that is, that is the router FTE.
So, that whole line is 84,955, not an additional cost for an FTE?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Interscholastic athletics for $627,000, departments at all 22 high schools for updating and modernizing equipment and supplies. Can you talk in terms of what-
Surely. The, the athletics cost center head has actually been, those dollars have been allocated to his unit. He'll be working with all the athletic directors across the district, putting in those requisitions, making the assessments, figuring out exactly what needs to be put and purchased and assigned to each school. So, that's where, that's where that money's going.
Okay. The diversity officer and chief of staff and one FTE. So, it says $698,000 to support the chief of staff and deputy superintendent positions. So, are these funds to be used to hire the chief of staff and, well, the deputy superintendent position is filled, isn't that correct, Dr. Davis? That's right. Is this to, to provide for their salaries or is it to provide support staff for these positions?
Altogether.
Okay. And in the next go-around, I'll ask about the supporting the CEO's transition team. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have Ms. Jacobs, Eubanks, Epps, and Valentine. Ms. Jacobs, are you? And Burrows around too? Right, yep. Okay, Ms. Epps?
Okay, thank you. So, I'm having a bit of trouble with this as well because it, it, it's not that I'm not in favor of the, what's being proposed per se, but I'm, I'm, I too am not sure if this is the right vehicle for these items to be, for, for these items to be done in this way. And so, because to me, it sounds like, like, okay, so if we take where we are right now and as we're discussing the budget priorities for 2014, 15, and then the budget is going to come out and then we'll have an opportunity to discuss that, but one of the things, it's a planning, budgets are planning documents and so you plan to do these things. Well, you know, life being what it is, our CEO didn't have the benefit of submitting a budget document to this board to implement or, you know, to outlay his priorities for the 13, 14 school year and what this seems to be is an opportunity to reprioritize the, you know, the plan as it was submitted for the 13, 14 budget. Now, I'm also not saying that that's not appropriate because I think that that is, you know, he's superintendent, I mean, you know, he's a CEO of, of this school system. I'm wondering though, Mr. Sharon, if there's a different tool by which to accomplish what is trying to be accomplished in, in this format, which, again, to reiterate, the language is meant for fiscal stability.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, you know, I'm, I guess, having, having a sort of a, a more close or, or a constrained review of what the financial review process is, is not really my intent. I didn't mean that if that's how it came across. Yes, yes, it is to deal with financial matters that are of urgency. It is to make sure that we have the fiscal stability guiding us. It, it's also, you know, that when we talk about the budget process, you, you really have two distinct processes. You have your budget development process, which is building the budget, having all of the work sessions, having all of the, the discussions about what the future plan will be, but as you mentioned a second ago, there's a lot of change. The school system changes every day. And so, you then have the, the budget execution process and that execution process is what we're in right now. You mentioned a second ago about it, maybe there's a, a different tool that we could use. One, one that comes to mind would be, the board currently has a, an FAB meeting periodically throughout the year. Those could be structured in that regard, but again, one of the, one of the things is, you know, the time is always the most valuable asset and sometimes we don't, the administration, my office, doesn't have information that's, that's framed up and firmed up that would meet that schedule. So, that's why sometimes it falls into, into this traditional process with the financial review.
Okay. Except that I, I don't know, I guess from, and this is not to suggest any kind of, you know, anything other than the desire to be upfront and, you know, transparent, I guess I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of fiscal, I don't know, like, I'm saying this, but I'm not, you know, I don't mean it personally or anything like that, like, you know, from a fiscal prudence, you know, four-letter word austerity, you know, that kind of thing where you, to, you know, the quote of Jan Levan Zahn, you call a thing a thing. And so, it's hard for, to be given a set of line items under the guise of maintaining the stability of the system when in effect, they're, because you asked the question the opposite way, well, what happens if you don't do it, right? So, if we don't do it, it's not that our system won't be stable, it's, it's just that those priorities won't go into, go into effect right away. priorities won't go into, go into effect right away. And so that's why I'm still, you know, kind of coming back to, and you mentioned FAB. So is there a better way for us, for then us to schedule and, you know, communication between the board chair and the CEO so that we can vote on things that are the thing as opposed to putting it in a structure that's more prudent because of, from a timeline perspective?
Well, I would, I would say that, you know, when this came as a first reader, my office was available to answer questions from October 24th until yesterday.
Right.
I didn't, we didn't receive any. We're not, I myself and personally and my staff would be available to respond as we need. When we talk about the priorities and just what this, what these, what this request consists of, you know, it's, the job of the administration is to provide the board through this mechanism, but we don't have the money in the right place because of state law. This is the mechanism to, to realign it because once it goes from here, it's got to go over to the county. So again, you have a, you have a very long and drawn out process, which makes administering in a school system of this size difficult.
I'd like to correct something that I heard that was not completely accurate. Right.
You want to correct me?
No. Right. It's important to correct this information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, I, I don't want to, I really, really don't want the perception to be that this board is either A, not in favor of 10 art teachers, not in favor of art education, nor are we, you know, meeting these proceedings in any kind of, you know, suspicious way or anything like that. I, again, I just, it just kind of hit me as we were deliberating over this. And you're absolutely right. I do want to fall on the sword on that one, that yes, your office, and you've always been responsive in any question that we've ever had of you. So, you know, I beg your indulgence in that regard. But I think inasmuch as, and to your point about how when we vote on things, it does go to the county council, you know, this, this board has been questioned in terms of our deliberation processes by the county council. And so, you know, we just want to make sure that if, as we are making decisions about these kinds of things, that it's done in a way that it, you know, keeps it on the, so that we can kind of get from under this cloud, if you will, from my perspective.
Your points are very well taken and I can assure you that me, myself and my team, we will, we will start thinking about this tonight, going forward, about how we could make this process be more, just add clarity or somehow be more streamlined so it otherwise presents the board with, with information, maybe in a different way or in a different timeline or some other way. We'll just start thinking outside the box to see how we could maybe, you know, improve the process.
Right. And again, I thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. I have Valentine, Eubanks, Boston, and then Burrows will start our round two. No, Boston? Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. I agree 100% with my colleague, Mr. Burrows, that budget sequel priorities. But we have a CEO who has priorities, who we are asking to enforce immediately, not next year. We have parents, teachers, and students who are asking us to change our system today, not, not next year. I'm a parent of two children who's asking for improvements in our system today and not next year. And that is why I'm voting for this because I believe that in order to hold the CEO accountable for what is accomplishing this year, for him to carry out his vision, that the budget should reflect that and that the system, that moving forward, that a process is in place with collaboration, but through the circumstances and the timing of his placement, this is something that reflects his priorities and the priorities of the system.
Thank you. Just, for me, let me go back to, for, for, for a couple of new guy questions. So we talked about the fact that it's a $1.7 billion budget. It's based on all kinds of incalculable number of assumptions, many of which don't materialize in the real world in this year. How many times do you do financial review in a given year?
Four.
Four times. How many times when you do a financial review, do you bring data to the board for us to make the decision on? And so if I were to ask you to go back and look at data from the past three, four, five years, is this financial review that you're bringing to us remarkably more money, remarkably different? Or is this along the lines of the types of mid-course corrections that CEOs and superintendents have made in the course of doing business?
Without looking at the data, it's hard for me to say, but given my experience in this kind of process, I would, I would be, I would be surprised if it's a whole lot different, both in terms of scale and detail.
And, and now, as a board, we certainly have the authority to reject this. Would we have the authority to then say, we don't want you to hire art teachers, we want you to instead hire different kinds of teachers? Or would we reject this and the, and the CEO then come back to us with another of, of his assessments? I'm just trying to...
I think the board can approve whatever they choose to prove. And how, how that then reconciles back to what the administration's estimates are would be a different, different matter.
Okay. And is there, would, would you recommend that rather than doing this, we brought financial review to CIB FAB meetings? Or would that be something you recommend? Or is this on your list of things you want to think about how to do differently?
I, I mentioned the FAB in, in the context of is there another kind of a tool or a mechanism to address the questions and the substance of what's being brought forward? We have to keep in mind that, as I understand, the rules, the, the board is not allowed to vote in a FAB meeting. So that, that's, that sort of, kind of defeats the process. And probably one of the underlying issues to this process is, is the, the length of time that it takes to make decisions be implemented in a classroom? You know, we might have, we might have several million dollars that we want to reallocate because, you know, in, in the past, you know, 45 days worth of, worth of instruction, things are coming to the attention of the administration to address, whether it be fencing or whether it be art teachers or whatever, whatever it might be. In a, in sort of a, you know, an ideal world, the administration would just make that happen because we'd have the resources, we'd have the budget authority, not exceeding the budget, but because of the Maryland law constraints, which we completely respect, we've got to go through this cycle. But the, the downside of that cycle is that the administration's ability to influence what's happening at an individual school site is just delayed. I mean, that's just sort of the, the truth of the matter.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And I think, Ms. Monday, did you buzz in for round one?
Yes, I just had a quick question that was raised by my colleague, Ms. Higgins, regarding the William Schmidt Center. How was that particular project determined to be a part of this review as opposed to other CIP or other projects that needed buildings and that needed repairs?
Speaking about the asbestos, ma'am?
No, about the, is that about asbestos with the new pavilion and so forth?
Oh, the Schmidt Center.
Yes, the Schmidt Center. I'm just curious about how that specific location got chosen as opposed to, to others.
I, I don't have that actual detail in front of me, but I'm, I'm strongly suspecting that through an actual site visit and a communication through principals and at the ID level, that, that, that those deficiencies came to light.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Valentine. I absolutely want the CEO to begin making progress as soon as possible. He should not have to wait until the budget process to do that. As someone who has graduated from the school system and have brothers, sisters, family members in the school system, I want the administration to start working to improve the school system, you know, as soon as possible. But that's only part of the concern, right? So if you take, Ms. Monday just mentioned the William Schmidt Center, there is over a million dollars for a new mattresses and new pavilion out of the operating budget. As someone who wants to see the school system approved today, when I look at our data, I would rather have that $1 million not go into new mattresses, but to professional development or maybe to modest raises or maybe to reading recovery or maybe to math intervention. So even if you look at the items that are embedded in this, you must ask yourself, how do these items, how are these items going to move our school system forward? And I'm, I'm not saying that they won't, you know, I support, as Dr. Arbogas said, it's not really a concern about art teachers or not, it's about priorities. We have limited funds and yes, I would rather spend that $1 million, $100,000 on professional development, recruitment, on reader recovery, on math intervention than new mattresses. So my concern in part is yes, about process, but it's also about the substance of each of these items. And I'm not sure if I made that distinction clear beforehand. But speaking, Dr. Arbogas, as the chief academic officer, you know I trust your judgment a whole lot. How does this, I understand that you can only, I understand that you must support the superintendent's recommendation, not saying that you really don't, but, but you all support it, that's great. My, my point is...
Are you looking for an answer?
I guess, Dr. Davis. I mean, how does this? How is this going to move our school system forward? How is this going to boost our reading and math scores? How is this going to support the STEM fields? How is this going to, you know, how does this deal with expanding any academic programs? You're spending over a million dollars on mattresses in the financial review.
So I'm going to answer your question, but I want to respond from a very personal perspective. A lot of the financial review comes to programs and academics.
Right.
It's very hard for me and the people in my division to watch a fund balance grow knowing that we have multiple needs. Every day, I talk to Mr. Sharon and Dr. Davis and, and Ms. Golson about things we want that we think are absolutely necessary. And the shopping list is much bigger than this. And I'm, this is me personally, I'm very frustrated that money sits in accounts and I can't move that money to professional development or to programming because it's sitting there. And then Mr. Sharon says, we might be able to get it to you, but it has to go through this process that takes months. The William Schmidt Center, Dr. Maxwell came in and was, felt, he, one of the first questions he asks is, he says, I believe in environmental literacy. Where are we? So my team puts together, well, we, we have this, we have this, and all he sees are holes. He said, why isn't it complete? And we're like, but we just came out of three brutal years. The Schmidt, so he asked for a proposal and he got a proposal. The $1 million is not, doesn't cover everything that needs to be vibrant. Now, the big ticket on this, so the mattresses are like several thousand dollars. Okay, so that's not a big thing. The big ticket here is that all our fifth graders visit Schmidt. He said, what about first graders? And we said, to get the first graders there, we have to redo this pavilion. We have this confidence course for high school kids that's just a disaster. It's so bad, kids can't even use it. Now, now the CEO hears that. He says, it's so bad, it's in such disrepair, why is it that way? And we said, Dr. Maxwell, we haven't had a dollar to our name in the last three years to fix this stuff. So he says, he sets his priorities. My team puts together what we think will move us in that direction as quick as possible. This is only, Mr. Sharon said, this, there are four financial reviews. I could give, I could triple this list. Right now, I have a document that would triple this list if we, if Mr. Sharon said we, would give us the green light. So I hear your argument. Your argument is, this is really a budget priority question, not a, not a shifting of funds. But from my perspective, it's very much, I have so many needs and my next big need, honestly, is going to be professional development. That I have a huge need around professional, and we've been able to cover it from now to about January. But I will go to, to Tom and say, Tom, we really need this to continue our professional development piece. And it's very frustrating for me personally that, that money is sitting in accounts that I can't get to for things that I believe in.
And you, you mentioned that extremely valuable point. If you want funding to go towards professional development and as a board member, we have limited funds, then why would I, why would I vote at this point to, to add art teachers and to, and to add this when I know for a fact professional development is more important to, to moving the school district forward?
So it's, it's a timing issue. So I can fund the professional development through about half the school year.
Right.
Come February, March, April is when I'm going to need to hit, make that hit. And, and I've already, we've already developed the request for the next financial review. So we're really trying to time when we want to spend that money.
Ms. Monday?
Thank you. My only concern with, with the Schmidt Center in, in this case is, it was just by, it seems to be by happenstance that he, Dr. Maxwell, had a, a visit and he saw some deficiencies. But I represent a district that has many deficiencies and I hear from many different constituents. Ms. Higgins talked about William Work. We get letters from teachers sometimes about the undrinkable water and other things. So it just seemed arbitrary to us for this particular location to get money of that dollar amount. So that's, that's my main concern. But I do want to move our conversation more toward action. So I had a question from, to Dr. Eubanks. Can I ask Ms. Harrison a question? Ms. Harrison, I, I personally think it's inappropriate for us to just take art teachers out and substitute it for math teachers. That, I personally think that's inappropriate for us to do here today. So my question is, can we decide to amend this as in take something out altogether without replacing it? Can we decide, what are our options tonight with moving forward? Because a number of my colleagues have raised what I think are legitimate questions. So not to necessarily do away with all of it, but perhaps reconsider items, not necessarily replacing them, but taking them out or off the table. So how can we move forward?
To the extent that any board member would want to amend the recommendation to strike certain, I'm not sure what to call it, initiatives, I'll just call them that. I think it would be important to allow staff to respond to the impact of having the items stricken so that you can make an informed decision as to whether or not you want to, want to approve an amendment like that. I would also caution the board in looking at this, given Mr. Sharon's description of the somewhat convoluted process for approval through the county, which we've had experience before, that you, you don't have a meeting scheduled in December. So anything that you would do today to strike certain initiatives, if Dr. Maxwell was inclined to bring them back later, he would not have an opportunity to have you review it until January. So I think to the extent that any board member has a notion of striking any initiative, that you would first advise the administration and allow responses from the administration as, as to what the impact would be. But the answer is yes, you can amend the actual recommendation to strike, but it would be inappropriate to substitute your judgment as far as putting something in as far as the budget. I would not advise you to, to do that. But if you have some concerns about something and you want Dr. Maxwell to, to bring back information or come back later, that would be appropriate.
All right.
No, thank you.
All right. I have myself and Ms. Anderson, and let me just say this because I'll... Ms. Higgins, you are now. Okay. It's clear from this discussion that the board wants and needs more information. I think it's also clear that there are opportunities and ways in which we can and should be trying to get that information. And we've had some time to do that. But, and I would also say with, with all due respect, while we... But, and I would also say with all due respect, while we weren't in the rooms when this decision is made, I would not assume for one minute that the professionals in this table put anything on this list arbitrarily, or capriciously, or any other way. I have no history to prove that, other than the fact that in a world of extremely competitive and tough resource decisions, that these decisions were made for us not arbitrarily, but given the best judgment based on available resources, timing, and the evidence in front of us. That's the only... That until or unless I'm proven otherwise by some evidence, none of which is in front of me now, that's the assumption that I'm going to vote with tonight, and I urge my colleagues to vote with that same assumption. To the extent to which we do and should need more information, then it is also all of our responsibility and administration's responsibility to determine what the right processes are, the fair and adequate processes are for us to get that. And if traditional processes that we've used for the past several years don't work, we ought to be creating new processes. But to the extent to which we ought to hold up critically important resources and projects now because the process isn't the way we like it, I would urge us not to do so. I don't know that I have no question revolving that, but I'll stop there. Dr. Anderson, and then Ms. Higgins.
I'll be brief. I'm inclined to vote for the recommendations, but with a recommendation to the superintendent and to the financial officers, that we must address some of the extent issues that the board has already discussed today. I think it's also important for board members to put in writing some of the concerns that exist in their districts, so that there could be a sense that there's an evenness, a balance in addressing issues across the county.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, thank you very much. Dr. Eubanks, I agree with you in terms of the quality and the caliber of leadership that we have in this school system, and really do not want my comments to reflect in anywhere anything other than my appreciation for the dedication and service that occurs every day, every minute, midnight, 2:00 a.m., whatever. I do think, and I really was taken by both Mr. Sheeran, Dr. Arbogas, Ms. Goldson's comments in terms of providing an understanding and a justification for some of these items on the list. And so if there was any recommendation I would have, would be that a review come in as a discussion instead of as a first reader, second reader, to allow that information and understanding about why these are priorities would be very helpful. I still see this, with all that said, I still see this as budget priorities for some small of the issues. So I will not be able to vote on this unless we do pull art teachers, the William Schmidt Center, and the Sutland Visual. Now, let me say, I am in total support of art integration and the value of that, but again, we're putting these funds, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, when next, within less than a month, we're going to get the budget item, then, and don't know how this then priority fits with the budget priorities in regards to school counselors, where schools do not have school counselors, and media specialists who also have an academic impact. The William Schmidt Center, to have more detail in terms of the 1.1 million dollars, and if this, if the superintendent, I'm sorry, CEO wants to come back in December or January in terms of providing an understanding about that, I don't have any problem revisiting that. But at this point, to have that amount of money and why Schmidt would take over some of the other critical needs that we have for capital projects, I believe that's a capital project. And then the Sutland Visual, again, to understand in a comprehensive way the funding for the Sutland Visual Arts Program. I would be able, if my colleagues were interested, in supporting all the other items in regards to this. Having said that, I also want to ask about the additional funds are added to support the CEO's transition team. Can you tell me, or tell us what that fund is and what support the transition team needs?
There is a small amount of resources that are being allocated for a couple of small service contracts, professional services contracts to...
I'm sorry, administrative support?
Professional services contracts. There's one, two companies. I think one of the contracts is like for twenty-five hundred dollars, the other ones maybe inside of ten. Both of them are for, basically to facilitate-
Analysis.
-accumulating all the information, conducting meetings.
Okay, thank you.
There's some mileage money and mileage reimbursements in there.
Okay. And then on this last page, you have this realignment assessment, and it has unrestricted realignment, which is a full paragraph. Is that additional, those are additional costs? It doesn't have any dollar amount on that?
In those instances, ma'am, what, yeah, the reason why there's no dollars is that because for those individual elements that are one of the adjustments, it's not that we don't have the money, it's that the money's in the wrong place. In those, in the ones, in the earlier ones, it's, you know, you've got a situation where you actually need to put the money there to make it happen. Classic example is the classroom balancing. You've got to put the money there in order for it to work.
Right, right. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Valentine?
I call for the question.
Question on this has been called. Ms. Hairston, help me out. Do you need a second and all the rest of that was?
No discussion.
I was in the queue before he called a question.
No, you were not.
I pressed the button.
Yes, but he was, number one, he was ahead of you, and he was still on second, you would be on third round, so he was... I have my list.
Sure.
He's on the list, even if he caused the question.
Ms. Hairston? Ms. Hairston?
I can't speak to Mr. Burrows, having put his, pressed the button, but I can't speak to, when you call for the question, there's no further debate.
There's no further debate, right. All those in favor of calling a question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Excuse me?
I say no.
No?
I call the roll, please.
Call the roll. It's a motion to end.
This is a motion to call the question.
Was it a second?
That motion failed.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Eubanks, for clarification, what are we, what is the motion on the floor, please?
The floor is to end debate and call the question. Don't you make a motion to...
No. When you call the question, that means that you're going to vote on the main motion.
All right, I thought it was, okay, I thought we could vote on whether or not to continue debate. That's fine, the question has been called, then would you please call the roll for item number 10.1?
Motion to approve item 10.1. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Epps? I did not hear you, Ms. Epps.
Epstein.
Ms. Higgins?
No.
Ms. Jacobs? She not present at time of vote? Ms. Monday?
Epstein.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Motion does not carry.
So is this, is this one of those ones that would require a supermajority to overrule the superintendent?
Yes.
All right. So given that, then, does the motion carry?
Actually, the recommendation is approved because you do not have a sufficient number of board members voting against it.
Mr. Burrows?
I think I'll get a other legal opinion on that, or an attorney general's opinion. I'm not sure if I agree with that interpretation, but I buzzed in to make a motion to approve the expenditures that we all agreed on, so I was trying to make a compromise. But I guess unfortunately, Mr. Valentine was not willing to do the same.
Well, just for the record, to be clear, Education Article 4403 subsection B reads, "Except for personnel matters and appeals of personnel matters in accordance with 4205, C2 and 3 of this title, and 6202 of this article, the county board shall require a two-thirds vote of all voting members of the county board to take an action that is contrary to an action of the chief executive officer." So unless we had two-thirds vote of all voting members...
Dr. Eubanks, could I ask a question?
That's it, that's the language.
Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, my question is, is that the motion was not to contradict the superintendent, it was to support the superintendent. So it doesn't require a two...
Well, the way it has been interpreted is that in order to overrule the CEO's recommended action, the board must have a two-thirds vote of the, two-thirds of the voting members have to... So in other words, if you wanted to reject the CEO's recommendation, you had to have two-thirds of the voting members saying no.
Well, okay.
All right, so that's the ruling as it stands. Folks who want to do homework on it, we, you know, we certainly can do that, but right now, that means that item number 10.1 will proceed. It has passed items number 10.2 and 10.3. I now entertain a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, for approval of items 10.2 and 10.3, Mrs. Burgl, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson?
I...
Mr. Burrows?
Monday, aye.
I did not hear you, Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, oh, this, yes, aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Not present.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Aye. Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Motion passed.
That concludes agenda item number 10.0. There are no new business item first readers, as they were removed from the agenda. We've had our public comments for the evening. 13.1 follow-up items for the October 24, 2013 board meeting are posted in board docs. Colleagues, we have not yet met in executive session, so there is no need to confirm any actions taken. So given that, there concludes our agenda for the evening, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, we're still in exec, we will adjourn to executive session, so no motion is required for that. So folks, thank you very much for the time. We are adjourned to executive session.